Before we get started, please turn off any cell phones or other devices to avoid any interruption. If anyone here is planning to present testimony, please sign up at the sign-up sheet in the back of the room. Anyone who wants an opportunity to speak tonight will have the time to do so. Please step up to the podium when it's your turn. Make sure you clearly identify yourself for the record and begin your testimony. We request that you please keep your testimony, focus on the relevant issues and facts for each application. Please remember, these hearings are to allow for members of the public to speak on issues related to land use applications, not to air grievances about each other or your neighbors. We will not tolerate or allow testimony that is hateful in nature and will stop your testimony if it delves into a statement on other people's character. Okay, tonight is Wednesday, the 16th of July, the time is six o'clock, the time set for our public hearing. Commissioner Daley and myself are present. Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are not.
No changes to the agenda. All right. Well, we'll call the first application up. I will open the public hearing on application 2025-00674-PBA-V Sawtooth Land Surveying. We'll first hear from our staff, Leon, and then we'll hear from the applicant. Go ahead, Leon.
All right. Thank you, Chairman Commissioners. So the item before you is a property boundary adjustment in variance for three parcels within the Coltrun View Estates subdivision. The applicant is Sawtooth Land Surveying. So contained within the project are 8.22 acres in the RUT district, highlighted here. The property is located near the northwest corner of Ten Mile and Amity. The parcels range in size from 1.01 acres to 3.71 acres and contain two single-family dwellings as well as some accessory structures. The two most eastern parcels are under the same ownership, and the most western parcel is obviously owned by one group. Pictured here is the proposed record of survey that would result if the variance and property boundary adjustment are approved. You'll note that the western parcel or lot will have no changes to its boundary. This is really just a way to formalize kind of an illegally recorded lot in the past, and I'll get into that a little bit more. To the eastern parcel, it would combine the smaller piece and the larger piece into one new parcel B. So here is an image of Coltrun View Estates as it was originally platted in 1994. You'll note the small buildable lots centered around the private road here and then one large open space lot. This was one of our non-farm subdivisions from back in the day. You'll note that we don't have that ordinance anymore, so we're not creating new non-farms, but we're still dealing with land created as a part of those, and so this is another example of that. So as I mentioned, this area highlighted in red was the former open space lot, which was with non-farms, held in a non-development kind of mode until zoning changed or urban public facilities became available. The zoning has changed. As a part of the project, however, when the owner created the smaller lots, they also sold pieces of the larger lot off to individual property owners, thus resulting in an illegal land division that we have all but these two parcels cleaned up to date through a similar process for variances and property boundary adjustments. So here is the property as it exists today. The area highlighted in red was resolved in 2021, again, smaller lot for the home, and then a portion of that larger lot was combined into one new lot. And then 2024, we had another project that involved these parcels over here resolving the issues that were associated with those lots. So now we're at the final step with these two property owners that, again, have held these pieces of the large open space lot for years. The reason they're going through this process is when you have a non-conforming property like this, you can't get development permits for new structures like barns or secondary dwellings or things like that. So the property boundary adjustment variance process has been the way for these individuals to resolve the issue. Should be noted, doesn't increase the original density of the development as it was approved in 1994. It really just cleans up kind of a mess from the past in terms of illegally deeded smaller properties. In terms of agency comments, County Surveyor had some specific to the record of survey, and I won't go into that because it's a lot of technical survey stuff, but they want some updates made to the survey to meet our standards, and that's a typical process we go through. We'll review all of those as conditions of approval, and then once we've blessed them, they can record the updated descriptions and the record of survey and close the book on this. The Ada County Building Official noted that they have no objections. Obviously, there are going to be building permits for any future structures over 200 square feet. And then finally, Central District Health noted that they have no objections, but they did want to note that all existing septic systems must be located on the same parcel as the dwelling and a minimum of five feet from any property line. There's no issue with that interior property line between the two ownership groups, and so we don't see an issue with them complying with that condition. There were no comments received from the public. I've got three slides in a row with variances, so you're going to see this slide three times in a row, but as you recall, there are three findings that must be made for variance. First, it can't grant a right or special privilege, not otherwise allowed in the base district. Obviously, we've done this two other times for four other lots within the same subdivision, so we think that they meet that one pretty easily. We've already been going through this process to clean up those properties in the past. It must relieve an undue hardship due to the unique characteristics of the site. You know, just the historic development of the property and the way that property was transferred to property owners and just kind of the process there, we think that does kind of create a unique situation here. In addition to it being a non-farm subdivision, which, again, we no longer have an ordinance for those, so they kind of have some unique characteristics built into the history of the project itself. And then finally, the variance is not detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare. Obviously, based on the comments received from agencies, we don't see any issue with them meeting that finding as well. So we do believe that it complies with the Ada County Code for Property Boundary Adjustments as well as variances, and staff is recommending approval of the project, and I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, are there any questions from the Commission? Any questions? Any questions? Okay, no questions? Okay, thank you. Is the applicant here who wishes to speak?
I'm here, but I don't have any questions. I'm here. Do you have questions?
Would you like to speak to your project? Leon's done a good enough job for you.
I will speak.
Okay, thank you. Let's see. You're Amy?
I am.
Yeah, okay. Okay, is there anyone else in this wishing, needing to speak to this project? Hearing none? Is there any documents we need to add to the record?
Chairman, I'll add my presentation as an exhibit to the record.
Okay, thank you. With that, I will close the public hearing on application 2025-00674-PBA-V. Okay, now it's up to the board. Is there a motion pending?
Mr. Chairman.
I'd like to kick it off. Go ahead.
I move that we approve the application for 2025-00674-PBA-V based on the findings and fact and conclusions of law contained in the staff report and the report that we heard tonight.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, now we have, I'll open the public hearing on application 2025-01051-V Patrick Nunnamacher. We'll ask our staff to give us a report. Go ahead.
All right. Thank you, Chairman Commissioners. So the item before you is a variance to encroach into the side yard setback for a new single-family dwelling. The applicant is Pat Nunnamacher. So pictured here is the subject property. It's a legal non-conforming platted lot within the Hillsdale Estates development. This is near the Star area. Hillsdale Estates was originally approved in 1994 as a non-farm residential subdivision, again, so allowing much smaller buildable lots in exchange for large open space areas. It's a 1.53 acre property. 10 acres is typically the minimum size for the RR district, which makes it, again, legal non-conforming. Access and frontage is from the private road of High Trail Lane. It's surrounded by a 15-acre open space lot pictured here, so this is all open space area that was approved through the Hillsdale Estates subdivision, and funny enough, Star has annexed all of that piece, so it's in Star's jurisdiction, but again, surrounded by a 15-acre open space lot. So pictured here is the applicant's proposal for the new single-family dwelling. Given the layout of the lot, the access of the private road, and some other constraints that I'll get into a little bit later, they are requesting a five-foot setback along the western property line. Typically, 25 feet is the requirement. They are meeting the setback on all other sides of the project, but that western property line is tight, and I'll explain the reasons why. So pictured here is a slope analysis that was submitted by the applicant's engineer. The green is good, the red is bad, so they did a good job coloring that for you, but what you'll see is where the proposed footprint for the home is, is in this green area, and it's very far to the west of the lot itself. As we move south and east, we get into very steep slopes that are really not appropriate for development. So for the applicant to meet that 25-foot setback puts a severe constraint on kind of the building footprint of the home, and so that, again, is why they're asking to shift it to the west there. In terms of agency comments, the building official is requiring a building permit, obviously, but they have no objections. This is in the Wildland Urban Fire Interface, so they're going to have to comply with that code to ensure that it's being constructed in a way that's fire-safe long-term for the residents in the community, and there may be some engineering required for both retaining walls and other things, again, given the steep slopes of the site. The Ada County engineer provided comments in general about grading, drainage permits, and the proposed retaining walls. We received no comments from the public. In terms of the findings for variance, whether or not this grants a right or special privilege, not otherwise allowed in the base district, staff believes that they meet this finding because Hillsdale Estates is a pretty unique development in itself. It's a non-farm development that several of the properties in the area have reduced setbacks already, both by the nature of the non-farm development as it was approved and just other variances approved over the years to deal with steep slopes and kind of a unique area. In terms of relieving an undue hardship due to the unique characteristics of the site, I think that slope analysis is a pretty good demonstration of some of the challenges of the site in terms of how they locate a home, as well as where that private road accesses to the north and how they kind of have to create turnaround areas and other things on-site to meet our code and ensure adequate emergency access. And then finally, not being detrimental to public health, safety, and welfare, we believe that's pretty easy to meet in the sense that we received no comments of opposition from any agency. We do believe that it complies with the variance section of our code, and we do recommend approval of the project, and I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, staff, does anybody from the board have questions for the staff? Any questions, Chairman? Go ahead.
Just a question in terms of the road, so fire, et cetera, you mentioned. There's no encumbrances there in terms of egress, ingress, egress for any of the safety components?
Yeah, Chairman Commissioner, we received no comments saying this was not going to work. This was platted this way back in the mid-'90s, and there were no challenges back then. They are going to have to work to create, again, a structure that complies with WIFI code. That could be fire suppression within the home. It could be different materials they have to incorporate that are more fire-resistant. Definitely managing landscaping up here is something that is required out of the WIFI code, but yeah, no comments of concern from the fire district, so.
Because of its closeness to the road, I guess, is why there's no...
Yes, yeah, and again, it's a cul-de-sac with an appropriate turnaround for emergency vehicles and so, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none? Thank you. There's the applicant here. Do you wish to speak, or are you just going to tip your hat to Leon?
I'll do great.
Okay, okay, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak? I don't have anybody on the list here that signed up, but is there anyone else who wants to speak? Hearing none. Leon, is there anything you need to add to the record?
Yes, Chairman, I'll add my presentation as an exhibit to the record as well.
Okay, with that, I'll close the public hearing on application 2025-01051-V Patrick Nunnamacher. Okay, what's the pleasure of the board? Anybody want to kick it off?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, I'll accept the motion.
So I move that we approve application 2025-01051-V Patrick Nunnamacher based on the findings of fact, conclusions of law, contained in the staff report, as well as the presentation of the staff tonight.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, I will open the public hearing on application 2025-01084-V Henry Proctor.
All right, thank you, Chairman Commissioners.
Oh, Leon again.
Yeah.
Oh, hey, you got the show tonight, huh?
I feel like I haven't been talking enough lately, so.
Okay, good enough. Go ahead.
The item before you is a variance to allow a detached accessory structure to encroach into the front yard area of a residential property. The applicant is Henry Proctor. Pictured here is the subject property. It's within a developed residential subdivision in the southwest Boise Ada County area. It's .4 or .5 acres in sight or in size and in the R2 district. As I mentioned before, it's in the middle of a platted subdivision, lots of very similar development around it, including a neighbor just to the southwest that has the exact same thing that this applicant is asking for. So we'll talk about that a little bit later as we get to the findings for a variance. It is a single-family dwelling that was constructed in 1980. Pictured here are the plans for the applicant's proposal, and so what we have here is the footprint of the existing single-family home. This is the cul-de-sac that serves the development, or serves the lot in terms of access and frontage, and here is the proposed detached accessory structure that they would like to construct. Pictured over here are some elevations to the peak. It should be noted, it's 20.5 feet in height, whereas the existing single-family home, I estimate to be about 16 feet, but the applicant can give us better detail on that if they choose to address the commission for the board, I apologize. So the importance of what front yard means is very specific to Ada County Code. It's not any encroachment into a setback area, but it's an encroachment into an area that typically we limit the size and height of detached accessory structures. So the front yard is defined or measured by a parallel line drawn across the furthest projection of the home out towards the front property line. So this whole area highlighted in red is what is known as the front yard area for this property. The reason the variance has been requested is obviously this is a pretty massive part of their property and a logical place for them to put this detached accessory structure. Other areas on the property are encumbered either by a septic system, a drain field, or simply setbacks required of the zoning district. So I'll go into details about the project a little bit more. So the detached accessory structure is 1,440 square feet. So the variances they need are one, for that size of a structure in that front yard area, typically you can't exceed more than 50% of the footprint of the main home. At 1,440 square feet, they're exceeding that 50%, and then the height also can't be more than the height of the single-family home. So those are both the things that Mr. Proctor needs a variance for, and as I get into the findings, again, staff is supportive here, just given the very constrained nature of the property, how the home was built on-site and how it created that front yard area. I mean, in reality, if the home had been rotated, you know, 20 degrees to the east, the front yard area would have been dramatically smaller, you know, probably just this area right here, and then we'd have no problem. So it really comes down to the historic layout and orientation of the home on-site and our requirements for front yards that are driving the need for the applicant's variance. In terms of agency comments, Boise Fire Department representing the Whitney Fire District had some specific request in terms of access to structures on-site. They also noted fire hydrants, being able to produce the required fire flow. I think they said there aren't any in-site that meet that 600-foot requirement, but because this isn't a dwelling, they aren't going to require fire sprinklers in that building. If it had been a dwelling, they could have asked for that, but they are not doing that here. And then Boise Public Works just noted that sanitary sewer is not available to the property. Those are the only two comments received from any agencies. Again, we received no comments from the public on this application. In terms of the findings for the variance, making sure it doesn't grant a right or special privilege, not otherwise allowed in the base district. In my presentation earlier, I highlighted the neighbor to the southwest has literally the same project right in their yard, and at that time, a variance was not required of them. It, you know, was done a while back, and maybe it's just been an oversight at the time for the permitting team that reviewed that project, but it definitely is the exact same project in the sense of the size, the height, and its location on the property. So just right next door, we have something that's already happened that this gentleman's trying to do. In terms of relieving an undue hardship due to the unique characteristics of the site, I mentioned before, just the orientation of the home on the property, Ada County's requirements for front yards, the location of the septic and the drain field, and just setback requirements. There really isn't a lot of other places to locate a building like this on Mr. Proctor's property, so we do believe that he has some unique characteristics to his site that are creating this issue, this need for the variance. And then finally, not being detrimental to public health, safety, and welfare. As I noted earlier, the agencies that commented have no concern, just some suggestions about how they build it and being able to access it in the future in the event of emergencies. So we find that it meets code for variance as defined by Ada County, and we recommend approval. Stand for any questions.
I'll give you a question. One of the comments was from the Boise Public Works that the sanitary sewer is not available to the property. How close is sanitary sewer to the property?
They are a ways away out here still. I mean, we're well within a half mile or more to city limits. There might be sewer in the area, but currently, the property is served by septic, so.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Okay, no questions. Thank you. There's the applicant here.
Yes.
Do you wish to speak?
Sure.
You've got the podium.
Henry Proctor, 11-839-Hemlock Court. Thank you, Leon, for all the help and very patient with me as I learned this process. I have a couple additional pictures if you wanted to see them to highlight what Dave Bishasta has done right next door, one of my friends, where his house is tilted about 45 degrees from where you would see the front street, and so it put probably 80% of his yard as front yard, and then he's built a 32 by 40, I think, so essentially about the same thing as I'm doing, but his was stick-built. And then with my house, where the septic's basically dead center in the back, I can't get access to what would be mostly the south side because I want maybe someday to extend the house on that side, so I wouldn't be able to drive around to it. The other side, with setbacks, would restrict me to like 20 by 20 at most and would be crowding up to the house, so literally I have no option other than to put it in the front yard or just gravel the whole thing and turn it into a parking lot. If you had any questions for me or wanted to see some additional drawings or pictures.
Does the board have any questions?
No, only if you feel you want to put that in the record, you can, but that's okay.
I mean, it's not a problem to do it if you'd like, but.
Okay. Did you get the idea for the dimensions from your neighbor?
Did I what?
Did you get the idea for the dimensions from your neighbor?
He offered me his plans for his shop, but I'm going to orientate mine differently and not have three big doors, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Are there any other questions? Okay, thank you. All right, is there any additional documents you need to add for the record?
Yeah, Chairman, I'll add my presentation as an exhibit to the record.
Okay, with that, I will close the public hearing on application 2025-01084-V Henry Proctor. Okay, the application being closed, the hearing, probably hearing being closed. Anybody want to kick it off? It seems to me like it fits. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I will move to approve application number 2025-01084-V Henry Proctor based on the findings of fact and conclusions of law contained in the staff report and the testimony heard this evening.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there a further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, all in favor of the motion say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Moving right along, we have, next up, I will open the public hearing on application 2024-02590-ZC-DASPR, Epic Development. We'll first get our staff report from Amelia. Go ahead.
Chairman and Commissioners, project number 2024-02590-ZC-DASPR is a zoning ordinance map amendment and development agreement to rezone a property from the rural residential district to the rural urban transition district, as well as a preliminary plat and private road for the Castello subdivision, a seven-lot subdivision. The property is located at 12200 South Hawk Haven Avenue and contains 35.17 acres in the rural residential district. residential district. The property is located close to CUNA city limits, and abuts the approved but undeveloped Spring Rock Plan community. The property is within CUNA's area of city impact. Most of the surrounding property is residential or agricultural uses with a non-conforming one-acre subdivision close by. The property is currently zoned rural residential, which has a 10-acre minimum requirement for new properties. A rezone to rural urban transition is required to have a subdivision with five-acre lots. In order to approve a rezone, the proposed new zoning district must be compatible with the applicable comprehensive plan. In this case, CUNA's comprehensive plan designates the area as low-density residential, which the proposed rezone to five-acre RUT is compatible with. Additionally, it is less dense than some of the already-developed one-acre properties that were platted before we had a 10-acre minimum in this area. Along with the rezone and subdivision, a private road is also included originating from the end of South Hawk Haven Lane to provide frontage for each of these lots. After the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval, the applicant was made aware of a possible issue with the private road, being that there is a prescriptive easement for the property to the west and an existing barn that may affect the boundaries of Lot 1. This slide shows the preliminary plat approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. This slide shows the barn and the strip of land being removed. It was decided that the strip of land owned by Triple Doubles Trust that was originally included in the Lot 1 boundaries would instead be an easement outside of the subdivision boundaries. This reduces Lot 1 and Lot 2 slightly, but both are still over five acres. This slide shows the updated preliminary plat, which has the minor change of the strip taken out of the boundaries. This will require the development agreement to be revised with the updated plat and updated meets and bounds description. If the board were to approve this application, they would need to table the project to an open business meeting or public hearing to allow for the development agreement to be revised. The application was transmitted to agencies concerned with the protection of the public health, safety, and welfare, as well as neighbors within 1,000 feet. ACHD commented that the proposed right-of-way for the future roads would need to be changed to a no-build area, as there is no existing road for the right-of-way to connect to. Central District Health commented that a land development application would need to be submitted, along with fee per lot, test holes, and full engineering report. Idaho Department of Environmental Quality commented with general advice and no specific comments to the application. The county engineer initially commented with a request for additional information in the form of a well adequacy supply evaluation, to make sure that the potable and irrigation wells have an adequate supply for the subdivision while not affecting other wells in the area. The applicants prepared a detailed well supply study that is included in the exhibits that show there would be no impact to wells in the area which the county engineer approved, and City of CUNA had no objection to the proposed rezone and subdivision. There were a few comments received by neighbors with concerns about water, irrigation, and the possibility of urban development in the area. Neighbors state that wells have gone dry in the area, and adding seven new domestic wells could negatively impact neighboring properties. The county engineer has reviewed the well supply study and determined that the proposed wells would not have a negative impact on properties in the area. Irrigation is currently provided by the CUNA East Water Corporation, which is an irrigation co-op run by property owners in the area. The manager of the co-op stated that the property leaving the irrigation co-op would negatively affect the remaining members, as the costs of the irrigation will go up without a contributing member, the co-op may dissolve, and farmers may instead drill their own irrigation wells, which will put further strain on local water resources. The county has reviewed these concerns and determined that the applicant can either remain in the irrigation co-op or provide a detailed irrigation plan showing there will be no obstruction to the CUNA East Water Corporation's existing systems. For concerns about urban development, the rural urban transition district is not an urban district, but a transitional one. The RUT district does not allow further splits under five acres, and the lots are going to have single-family homes. Further development is limited to just one additional secondary dwelling if the future property owners submit an application for one. Any denser development than five acres would require another rezone and connection to municipal sewer and water, and would have to comply with CUNA's comprehensive plan. Staff finds that the application complies with Ada County code and recommends approval to the board. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval at their June 12 public hearing. As a reminder, if the board were to approve this application, they would need to table to an open business meeting or public hearing to allow for a revised development agreement that excludes the Triple Doubles Trust property from the subdivision. This presentation will be known as exhibit number 57, and I will stand for any questions.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions? Mr. Chairman, go ahead.
Several questions. One is, this is just south of the Spring Rock development, correct?
That's correct.
So is there, was there any discussion or review in terms of connectability, in terms of the roads? Spring Rock is getting Veolia water, any of those kinds of discussions?
It wasn't discussed whether connection to Veolia would be required or an option, but right-of-way is proposed, or in this case, a no-build area for the future extensions of these two roads along the north and eastern boundaries of the subdivision. So those will be no-build areas for when right-of-way is eventually taken out.
Go ahead.
So, the legislature just passed a law regarding developments in terms of wells, community wells, as opposed to individual wells. Was that part of the consideration for what's being developed here?
It was not during the review process. It was basically reviewed as individual well consumption.
Because that law went into effect on July 1st.
Yeah, it was not part of the review process, unfortunately.
Do you think we need to put that in there because it's now the law in terms of development?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Daly, this application was submitted in 2024, so it would have predated.
Grandfathered.
So I feel like we could proceed under the previous standards.
Well, I understand that part of it, but I mean, in terms of, how many comments did we get in terms of well impact, questions of well impact?
We received comments from, I believe, three individual neighbors or households, one of which was more concerned for the individual wells, one more focused on the irrigation, but I believe it was three total.
It was, excuse me, what?
Three comments total.
Three comments. And the well review was by whom and when, what was the timeframe?
The applicants engineered, prepared the well adequately supplied test shortly before the planning and zoning hearing for the engineer to review, and he reviewed and approved it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions for the staff? Okay, thank you. Okay, Todd Lakey. Good evening, Mr. Lakey.
Good evening Commissioners. Before I start for the record, my name is Todd Lakey with Lakey-Villegas Law, address 141 East Carlton Avenue, Meridian, Idaho.
Okay, go ahead.
Commissioners, I'll start by thanking staff, appreciate Ms. Haynes' analysis and review and recommendation of approval in this case, also certainly appreciate the Planning and Zoning Commission's review and recommendation of approval as well. From a high perspective, this meets the requirements of the county ordinance and comprehensive plan for approval. This proposed RUT zoning would bring five-acre lots to this particular site in a very appropriate location in the area of impact for the city of CUNA. Their comprehensive plan supports it, as Amelia noted, and this is a small project, which will be high-quality custom homes that are consistent with some of the recent high-quality custom homes that have been built in the area. Are you running this slides, Amelia?
Yes, I think this is out of batteries.
Next slide then, if you would. So Commissioners, I've done a lot of projects with Mr. Langston in Epic Development over the years, and they do a quality project. He CCNRs are proposing a minimum square footage of 3,400 square feet. And this location in CUNA's area of impact is where growth has occurred and where it's planned to occur in the future. And these five-acre lots will frankly help keep the more rural feel that already exists in the area as development proceeds. It's also consistent with the character of the area, we're less dense than some of the development that exists out there, we're also less dense than what's coming. Next slide. So it's a fairly simple, straightforward project, it's a private road, and Ms. Haynes did a good job describing that we're changing it from owning the property under the initial portion of the road to now it being an easement, which is in the best interest of all of those involved. It's really an extension of South Hawk Haven Avenue, which is a private road for the existing subdivision, and I'll kind of walk through that in just a minute. Next slide. So these are some of the homes that I usually describe when I'm talking about Epic Development. This is the Keep in Meridian, smaller lots, but very nice custom homes. These are the types of homes that we're talking about being constructed in the area. And then, next slide. These are some of the private custom homes that exist out in the area. So we're talking about doing something that's very compatible with what exists as far as the current standard of homes in the area. Next slide. So let me talk a little bit about the neighborhood, I'm going to take you through some pictures in just a moment here, and it starts on West CUNA Road, which is kind of the main road to the south, we're kind of at the end of that road, so there's not really a lot of through traffic coming this direction. But we will head north on South Hawk Haven Avenue. The starred properties are the subject property, and we'll turn left on Lost Horse Lane, and then ultimately left on Lonnie Lane. So, next slide. So that photograph you can see there on the left, that's looking north on Hawk Haven from West CUNA Road. And then we move north, and as you get up into that corner, that's the subject property you can see on the right, that's where the private road will be extended. And then we'll turn left, and the bottom slide is turning left onto Lost Horse Lane. We have some five, I think closer to six-acre lots there on our right as we go up Lost Horse Lane. Next slide. So then you proceed a little ways up Lost Horse Lane, and that top slide is the intersection of Lost Horse and Lonnie Lane. And Lonnie Lane's that older subdivision that Amelia referenced that's been there, there are one-acre parcels, there are homes that have been built probably in the 70s and 80s, so smaller homes and smaller lots. And that picture looks down Lonnie Lane, then the last picture there on the right, that's going all the way to the end of Lonnie Lane and looking back up north up Lonnie Lane. Next slide. So a little bit about the character of the area. CUNA is approaching, CUNA city limits are about a quarter mile away. We also look at this project essentially as the last thing, RUT's supposed to be a buffer, it's the last thing between CUNA coming from the east and the public land, CUNA coming from the west, excuse me, and the public land located to the east. And then as was mentioned, we have the Spring Rock Plan community, I'll show you that, located immediately adjacent to our north. We have existing residential development, smaller and larger lots, but we're within that appropriate zone of lot sizes that already exist. Next slide. So this is the Spring Rock Plan Community Future Land Use Map. And we, the subject property is the starred property, that yellow property is what they designate as residential homes. And their designation, their comp plan in residential homes allows for up to six dwelling units per acre. So much more dense than what we're proposing, and that's immediately adjacent to the north. Next slide. So this is CUNA's future land use map, since we're in their impact area. The star is the subject property, and the yellow is their low-density residential designation. So that's up to two dwelling units per acre. Again, more dense, half-acre lots compared to our five-acre lots, but we are consistent, as they note, that's its maximum of two dwelling units per acre. And that low-density designation is appropriate under their comp plan for the outer portions of their area of impact, which is where we're located. And then we have the orange, and the orange is their medium-density designation. That's the portion that's about a quarter mile away, I'll show you, it's been annexed already, and that's a higher-density zoning that exists there. And then the blue adjacent to our east is the public lands. Again, CUNA, no objection, they acknowledge it supports, their comprehensive supports the application. Next slide. So this kind of references the lot sizes specifically, there's the city of CUNA in that medium-density designation, their zoning is also R6, which is six dwelling units per acre. Our subject property under the stars, there are five to six acre, like I said, close to six-acre lots there to our west, we have the one-acre lots to our west, we have 10-acre lots to our south, and then we have one acre and five acre lots there to the southwest. So that's kind of the existing zoning and character of the area. Next slide. So we are in the impact area, as you know Commissioners, the impact area is where growth is supposed to occur. That's where it's planned, that's where it's, in this case, also happened. The county code for rural urban transition notes that this is a very appropriate designation or zoning in your impact area, as long as it complies with the city comprehensive plan, which we do. I think Amelia covered it, but I want to emphasize that some of those in opposition thought that the RUT zone would allow for higher density, more lots, and RUT, we can't go below five-acre lots. The property would have to be rezoned to go higher density, same with RR or anything else as the city services and sewer and water get out to this area. And then again, this is where, in areas of impact, where ag and residential development coexist. Next slide. So no negative agency responses. ACHD acknowledges this is a very small, low-impact project, we have very good levels of service as far as the roadways in the area. They don't approve our private road, but they approve the connection to the public roads. And we will also preserve that area along our northern boundary and our eastern boundary for that right-of-way acquisition in the future, somewhat coordinated probably with that plane community, but we'll keep those as setbacks and no-build areas. Next slide. So just touching on the groundwater evaluation, we're not in an area of groundwater concern or drilling concern in accordance with IDWR, so we're not in an area where it's a problem. There was some concern expressed by a resident, therefore we performed that groundwater evaluation study, and that reviewed the seven wells and found that there would be no significant impact to the aquifer and groundwater within 100 feet. We're not in a nitrate priority area, they also tested water quality, it meets water quality standards. And in that study, Commissioners, they looked at over 50 well logs, they looked at three residential wells in the nearby properties, and then they also did groundwater modeling as part of their evaluation analysis for both capacity and drawdown. So Commissioners, no negative impact, and again, the county engineers approved that study. And then lastly, the property does have existing irrigation water rights and will utilize a pressurized irrigation system. We will, we're happy to submit that plan to demonstrate that we won't have any negative impact on the existing facilities with that private water company. I will note that my client is still evaluating the best option and in good positive discussions with that water company. I will also add, in conjunction with that, I don't think it's appropriate for the county to mandate that anybody participate in a private entity. The appropriate thing is to make sure we're not negatively impacting water delivery for anybody else. But my client does have their own water rights, they could do their own well if they chose to do so, but I think they're in the middle of good positive discussions to remain with that water company, but again, that shouldn't be a county requirement one way or the other. Next slide. So with that, Commissioners, we agree with the conditions of approval, we meet your requirements, and we'd ask for your approval. I'd be happy to answer questions if you have them.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the staff, from the Commission?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
You know my questions are going to be water questions? So, the changed use, because you indicated the aquifer, part of the aquifer recharge is agriculture-related in terms of, so was that part, a component part of the study that changing the use, you're going to use surface water for the lawns, et cetera, correct?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Daly, so I think we're looking at subsurface irrigation water, let me confirm that. So, it's subsurface irrigation water, but with these five-acre lots, they're still irrigating the entire property with it, so that aquifer recharge would be So that aquifer recharge would be very similar to an agricultural use as far as, you know, watering their pastures or their fields.
Because, because that's what the well's being used for now, correct? They have, you said they have a water right in a well, and that's what it's being used for, correct?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Daley, so there is an existing well on the property that belongs to that private water company, and that is the well that if we don't end up working with the private water company, like I said, they're having good conversations, but that's where that water comes from currently.
Go ahead.
So the city of Cuna is relatively close. They have water and sewer. Is there an anticipation, if it is annexed and becomes available, that it would transition to city, for city usage for water and sewer?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Daley, so at least our preference is to do what we're applying to do, to keep it five acre lots. That's more compatible, more appreciated by our neighbors as far as what we'll be proposing. It's more consistent with the existing site. If and when services get out there, then that's a whole new public hearing process. Anyway, that's not in our plan, but it, you know, down the road, anybody has the right to apply, whether whatever their property is owned.
Go ahead.
Well, I think it's my last one. Did your water analysis address the quality as well as the quantity question?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Daley, yes. Those three domestic wells that were tested, specifically the water quality was tested, and that's mentioned in the report.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
Okay, we have a couple who've signed up to testify. Jeffrey Nelson.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to come and talk.
Yeah, you have three minutes, by the way.
Name is Jeffrey Nelson. I live at 12220 South Hawk Haven Avenue, which is right across the street from the little, small property. And I am the vice president and the irrigation water master, call me when there's problems, guy for the irrigation district. So I didn't meet the first meeting, so they made me the member of the board when I moved into the property five years ago. I have a little map that shows you how the irrigation system is set up. If I can pass those out to you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Be sure to give one to the staff over there as well.
Thank you for your help.
Thank you.
I want to thank Amelia. She's been working with me a little bit. I was ill during the planning and zoning meeting and was not able to present some of this information of our district.
Okay.
I apologize for that. The color, the map shows the farmers and the acres that the development is going to impact, and the little white blocks are how many acres each farmer owns, and the red is actually the outside border of our irrigation district. The blue line is where the piping runs, and the little red water drop is where I live, right there on the corner. Okay. I appreciate the explanation for the RUT. Some of the farmers were concerned that if Epic Development wanted to change into a high-density housing building, that the permitting they're going for now is going to stay at the seven acres, and I'm not aware of anyone who really opposes them doing that. We think that they're going to bring some nice housing and some good development to the, to the area and not be affected by Spring Rock and M3 Development, which is the orange squares that you saw in the previous. We are in talks with Jaren. At the end of the planning and zoning meeting, we were under the impression that they didn't want to be involved with us, but today he sent me an email and said that they would like to increase, to continue communications with us. I've listed some, I've got a timer here going. I've got shortened minutes, sorry. We think that they will impact, can I ask for a reset?
No, just go ahead. Strap it up when you can.
Okay, I will. I will. And the things that I've highlighted on the back of the page are the things that I am concerned about. And if they don't join our irrigation district, we will be impacted greatly because it removes 22% of the revenue that we have. Plus, we have to do a whole bunch of maintenance on the pipelines, and that's why I highlighted it on the sheet, to remove some of the risers that would be in their way, could possibly be damaged. So we're simply asking for guidance because I don't know what, how to do this, but I will continue talking with Jaren, and we'll see what we can, what we can, see if we can join together and create a usable or a workable relationship with the new owners and provide irrigation. They did not mention if they ever have talked to the Idaho Water Department of Resources, and to my knowledge, they have not. I called and asked if they had investigated irrigation usage, and they don't have a record of it right now, which doesn't mean they haven't. It just doesn't mean that the lady I talked to did not have that record, and it's on the sheet that I gave you guys.
Any questions for Jeffrey? Any questions? You got any questions? Okay. Oh, go ahead.
I guess my, my question is the perception in terms of, you said you just received information that they were willing to have a dialogue with the...
Yes, yes. At the end of the Planning and Zoning Commission, we were under the impression that it wasn't going to work. They weren't going to, going to join the irrigation district to water, and they were going to put their own system in. But he contacted me today and said that wasn't his impression. That wasn't his reason, that he does want to continue on, and we're happy to help. We're happy to contribute financially. We're happy to contribute work-wise to make the thing work. We don't want a whole bunch of well holes up there, and we're having a problem with ours at the moment. Our hole is, was developed in 1976, and we have some problems. We're going to have to do it. So working with them is going to help all 10 farmers up there, and we're looking forward to maybe making that.
Any other questions?
A relationship.
Thank you. No, I don't have any. Okay. Thank you. Okay, Gary Briggs.
Gary Briggs, 9000 West Cuna Road. I am the president of the Cuna West Irrigation Project Corporation. I stood in front of the committee about a month ago and expressed my concerns about wells going dry. I keep hearing reports of, they've done these log checks, there's no problems. Our well went dry, and we had to dig 100 feet deeper three years ago. There are two other wells within half a mile of this development that have had to drill two new domestic wells, so it's really concerning when you hear people say, we've done, we read the logs, we ran the logs, we did this, we did that, there's no problem. Well, I wouldn't have to have had a new well if there wasn't a problem, and the other two neighbors wouldn't have had to drill two wells if there wasn't a problem in the area. So that is our concern for our domestic wells. When I was here last time, they talked about working with us, but when you, when I expressed that, the attorney said he had no knowledge of them talking with us. He was against that, didn't feel like they should have to be forced in it. I think he just reiterated that, that a private, they shouldn't be forced to cooperate with a private organization. And you guys expressed that unless a project was going to harm other people, and I expressed, well, if our irrigation well goes dry, that's going to harm us, and if the cost of running the well goes up 22%, that's going to harm us. And what Jeff just mentioned, we're concerned if they don't join us, then the water system coming from the well, which is located on the northeast corner, right there, if you run down that red line going, going south, no, that's going, there's a line there, and there's also another line, go south now, go down. There's also, the main line runs through there. It's a buried main line, but every 50 foot, there's a riser up, and if they damage those risers, if they don't zero out that system so it's not going to cause us problems, that's going, that's going to be a real concern. So if they're out of the corporation, part of our water system, support system, runs under that property, and we're concerned that if they're not part of it, they'll have no concern of it. We'll have to take care of fixing whatever concerns we have, and they'll be able to come in and develop without any problems. My other concern is, and I think you've reached that, there's, under no conditions with the current approved permit, can they build more than the seven houses they asked for? Is that correct?
With the RUT zoning, they would not be able to build more than seven houses, single-family houses.
And that would be a completely new meeting, a new application if they wanted to go higher than that.
That's correct.
Okay, all right. That was our, another one of our concerns. But last time when I was here and you approved their, the project, I walked back to the three or four gentlemen there, and they clearly had no interest in cooperating with the corporation, none whatsoever. I, their faces, their eyes, their attitude towards me was, we got it approved, we don't need you guys anymore. They've been talking to us, and they reached out here so that they could come up here and say, we're working with them, we're talking with them, but sincerely, their facial expressions last time when you approved, it was, they don't want anything to do with this. I understand why they don't. It's complicated being involved with other people, but I don't think they're, I think you should not believe they'll be cooperating with the corporation at all. And hopefully, they prove me wrong, but I just want you to know, all the things they talk about doing, if it's not mandatory, they're not forced to do it. Like, we have our wedding venue there, and I asked them if they would, you know, let people knowing, because these houses are going to be wealthy people, and wealthy people don't want to hear music Friday and Saturday night. But our wedding venue was built there because there's nobody on the east, and there's basically nobody on the north, and the neighbors are, we specifically put the wedding venue there after we moved in and saw, we would not disturb anybody. So I don't want them to plant seven wealthy groups of people who are going to bitch every Friday, Saturday, and occasionally on Sunday. We have a conditional use permit, and we shut our music off at 10. We have a, we have a decibel meter, but I'm, we're very concerned that they're just going to moan once they move in there, that they can't sit out on their backyard Saturday night and not hear our music, because you'll hear it.
All right. All right.
Thank you.
Is there any questions?
Ms. Chairman, just...
Go ahead.
Where, where is your house located in terms of the...
My house is located, if you, right there, and then if you move up that white building, that is the barn, and the doors open north, and that dark strip of property continue going north above the house. That dark strip, that is the yard with trees around it. That's where the weddings go on. And so when we built it, if you keep going north, nobody's north. Nobody's worried about the noise. If you go east, nobody's worried about the noise east. West, we're a long ways away from Peterson's house. She's not complained about the noise. The goat dairy going south, they're over the ridge, they have not complained about the noise. But these other people here, that is not a flat area. That's a sloped hill. And we have planted lots of trees below there, like two layers of trees to try to stop that noise. We're, we're very considerate of our neighbors, and we have a, we tell the DJ once to turn it down below the decibel meter. We come back the second time and ask him to turn them down. The third time, we turn the power off in the barn. We have not had to turn the power off, but that is what it says in their wedding contracts, that if you exceed the decibel meter, we will turn the power off in the barn. So I just don't want to have to put up with a bunch of people every, every week calling saying, we can't stand this music after they've moved in. So...
Go ahead.
When you referred to you were before us before, was you, was that the Planning and Zoning Commission you were before or before us?
For what?
You said you had presented to us before about the...
I presented last time when you approved it, that we had these, we had concerns about the noise and concerns about the water, and you approved it, and Jaren had been working with us, but when, when you approved and I walked back there, it was clear they, I'm telling you, I felt that it was clear they have no interest in working with us.
Thank you.
But there's, but they're talking like they do, and I know you're not supposed to say anything derogatory. I'm just saying, we do, our irrigation district has a great concern that because it's approved and as they move forward, we'll be, we'll be out and we'll have to deal with that.
You must mean our Planning and Zoning Commission, because I don't recall you ever being in front of us.
I can't hear you, sir.
You must refer to our Planning and Zoning Commission, because I don't recall you ever being in front of us.
No, I was in front of you a month ago.
That was the Planning and Zoning Commission.
It was, it was the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Oh.
No, it wasn't us. That's why I asked the question.
Oh, it wasn't you?
No, it wasn't us.
Okay.
We have Planning and Zoning Commission, and the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval.
Okay, I apologize for that.
But then anytime there's this kind of an application, I ask them to us for the final approval, if we do it.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I don't have anybody else. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Okay, Mr. Lake, would you like to take a few minutes for a rebuttal?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Again, before we start, for the record, Todd Lakey with Lakey-Villegas Law, address 141 East Carlton Avenue, Meridian, Idaho. Commissioners, I'll just hit a couple of points. Appreciate the comments from Mr. Nelson. As you noted, there's really no opposition. This is consistent with the character of the area. We have higher-density development that's coming. This will help preserve that more rural residential, residential estate feel for a longer period of time, and until city services get there, and then, you know, we'll see what happens from there. But that, this will help preserve that character of the area. My clients have had conversations and have been in conversations with the private water As I visited with Mr. Langston, they, and what I said at the Planning and Zoning Commission was, they're evaluating their options. They have a right. They have water rights. They have the right to do their own system. What they need to do, if they do that, if they choose that route, they need to make sure that they don't negatively impact the facilities, the flow, the infrastructure of the private water company. But it's not appropriate for the county to mandate participation in that private entity. It's like saying, you have to go buy your groceries at Whole Foods because they want your money. That's not an appropriate mandate from government. But they are a very appropriate and viable option for Mr. Langston. I would say that he very much disagrees with Mr. Briggs' interpretation of their discussion and body language, but that, again, is neither here nor there. I think they look at it as a very viable option. They're having positive discussions. It's just not, it's like you getting too deep in the weeds on CCNRs. That's not where the county government goes. I will add on that vein. I know the county doesn't get into CCNRs, but we did agree at the Planning and Zoning Commission that we will add a reference to the wedding venue and Mr. Briggs' property in our CCNRs, so the neighbors will be aware of it, that there's a conditional use permit that allows it, and Mr. Briggs simply just has to comply with his conditional use permit, and he'll be fine. So commissioners, that's our proposal. Again, we conform with your ordinance as found and recommended by staff and your P&amp;Z Commission. I'd ask for your approval. I'd be happy to answer questions if you have them.
Okay, well, that was my question on the, on the event center that's there for weddings, that your prospective purchasers are aware of that when they make a purchase.
Mr. Chairman, that's correct. We will put them in our CCNRs to make sure that that's protected and that they're aware of it.
Okay, any other questions?
Just as a follow-up on the, his comment on the Department of Water Resources and the water question in terms of, I mean, I know you, excuse me, you indicated, and it is not in a groundwater control consideration area, but the, was Department of Water Resources visited with, consulted or in any way, show perform by the consultants when they did the water study?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Daley, I don't know the answer to that question, if they contacted IDWR in their study. They certainly reviewed the information from IDWR. As I noted, we're not in any of those areas of concern for drilling or groundwater. They obtained those well logs, which are typically provided by IDWR from their website, and they're very familiar with standards and...
they're very familiar with standards and gallons per minute per type of use, and so they have the expertise. Whether they spoke to the lady at IDWR, I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and I think it was brought up in our staff's report that your contractor, who had done the study, had provided all the information to our engineer. Is that not correct?
Mr. Chairman, that's correct. We provided our study. The county engineer approved it.
And he's our water guy right now, right? Okay. Any other questions? Go ahead.
Question for staff regarding the conditions of approval of the event center. Do you know what those are offhand regarding the volume and the music?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Davis, I am not familiar with those conditions of approval.
Okay. Well, we do have noise ordinance that would apply.
What did he just say? I'm sorry.
He said he wasn't specifically familiar. We didn't ask them to bring up your conditions for this case, but I was just curious if he knew about them.
And they said no. So, any other questions?
So, Mr. Lakey, you said that there's still conversations regarding the water use and the irrigation going on?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Davidson, they are talking about the existing well that's owned by the water company, and them having a cooperative relationship, maintaining their, their participation in the company. My understanding is, it was not conveyed to them that they will not participate. It's, and what I conveyed at the meeting was, we're evaluating our options. We have the right to do our own well, and we have our own irrigation water rights, but there may be, and there appears to be some benefit in participating with that company. So they're still having those conversations. The bottom line was, it's not an appropriate condition for the county.
Are you helping to facilitate those conversations, or is that not something you're working on?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Davidson, I am not helping facilitate those conversations. Sometimes it's better to have lawyers not involved.
Any other questions? Okay, any other questions?
No.
Okay, good. You have, you have documents you don't want to include in the record?
That's correct. The applicant's presentation will be-
Anything else, Mr. Chairman?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
The applicant's presentation will be included as exhibit number 58, and Jeffrey Nusslin's documents will be included as exhibit number 59.
Okay. And your presentation has already been included?
That's correct.
Okay, with that, I will close the public hearing on application 202-240-2590-ZC-DASPR. The application being closed, it's up to the board now. Is there, is there a recommendation or a discussion or a motion?
Mr. Chairman, just as, as you know, my, my focus is water, and I think it's appropriate based on the information that was presented. It's always a concern on what we, what we do with the water, how we use it, when we use it, and how we use it, the quality, et cetera. But I think this has been given thorough review by the appropriate technical experts, including our, our county expert. So I'm sufficiently, and that they are going to have discussions both with the City of Kuna when it becomes available, as well as the current water district that's there. So I think the processes are there for dealing with the water.
Well, it does seem appropriate. Any other discussion?
Well, I'll just address the event center issue. Obviously, it's impossible to stop people from complaining about anything. I guess the question is, can they negatively affect the event center? And I would say that, you know, as long as you're following your conditions of approval, the county will, you know, enforce those and make sure that your rights are protected to do whatever you need to do as specified in the conditions of approval. And, but I certainly hope that by putting some mention of it in their neighborhood code, CCNRs, that, that'll help, especially if they're obviously made aware of it before they purchase the house. If that will help alleviate some of the concerns. But if there are complaints, then obviously, we will tell code enforcement that, you know, you guys have conditions of approval, and you're within your rights.
Okay, if we're going to make a motion, the motion would be to table until when?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we would recommend the August 5th open business meeting.
August 5th, because you need to adjust the development agreement and the little-
That's, that's correct, Mr. Chairman. You have to prepare final documents.
Yeah, prepare the final documents. All right, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we, do we approve and table? Is that what we do?
Yes.
Approve application 202402590-ZC-DASPR-Epic Development Corporation, and table it to allow staff to revise findings of fact, and until the August 5th open business meeting. Is that a sufficient motion?
Sure, Mr. Chairman, Mr. David.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there any further discussion? Okay, I'm happy to support this. I do think that with the ad addition of the CCNR, that the buyers will be aware of the wedding venue, and they will, they will, before they make a purchase. And, and of course, we have a noise ordinance, and we have, and your own planning, your own conditional use permit as well, has those ordinance as well. So I think, I think meets all that. I think it'll be a good project. So with that, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, now we will open the public hearing on application 202402657-ZC-DASHHDPR, Riverside Engineering. We have Mr. Brent Danielson to present it to us. Our staff, go ahead, Brent.
I have some technical difficulties.
Okay, get the IT guy in here. Or he is the IT guy.
I think we just want to say.
Yeah.
I have, you want to do something for me in the presentation, so I apologize.
There's blank slates. That doesn't mean they're not here to speak on it, but they didn't sign up for it.
Have a good night.
from the Rural Preservation District to the Rural Urban Transition District, a development agreement, Plumeri-Platte Hillside and Private Road for the Shannon Ridge subdivision. The property is located in the foothills north of Boise. The property is located at 5125 North Bogus Basin Road. It contains 173.99 acres. The applicant has applied for a zoning ordinance map amendment to rezone 120.41 acres of the property from the Rural Preservation District to the Rural Urban Transition District, with the remaining 53.12 acres of the property remaining rural preservation. And the portion of the property that's remaining rural preservation is the proposed lot that's shaded in the bluish green. The subdivision will consist of, will be a 22-lot subdivision consisting of 21 buildable lots and one ranch lot. The buildable lots within the subdivision range in size from 5.01 acres to 10.94 acres. The ranch lot will remain zoned rural preservation, and the applicant, Charlie Gibson, will retain ownership of the lot and will use the lot for continued agricultural purposes and for fire refuge. Any further development of the ranch lot will require separate application to Ada County. The subdivision will be developed into three phases, within three phases. The applicant has also applied for a private road application to construct three private roads and a hillside development to do work in steep hillsides. The property is located within Boise's area of city impact. The Boise Conference, therefore, the Boise Comprehensive Plan as adopted by Ada County is the applicable comprehensive plan. On the screen here, I have kind of the future land use map of, of the area. The green, excuse me, the gray is kind of the buildable areas of the foothills, and then where you have kind of the brown hash, diagonal hash line, that's the non-buildable area. And then also on this map here, this also kind of shows you where the area of impact line is as well. So this line right here is the area of impact line for the city of Boise. The future land use, the, this, this designation for the buildable designation identifies buildable areas of the foothills, contains slopes less than 25%. This designation has a density of one unit per 40 acres, but allows for greater densities in accordance with the city's density bonus formula. The way Ada County does not have a density bonus within its zoning ordinance as it relates to this type of development. The proposed subdivision includes the dedication of a 53-acre ranch lot that will preserve a sufficient amount of open space in addition to the proposed number of residential lots, which will be greater than five acres in size. The proposal to locate the buildable lots on the southern and eastern portions of the property in order to preserve the 53 acres of ranch land on the northwest portion of the site, which is shown in the bluish green, of the site is compatible with the Boise Comprehensive Plan as adopted by Ada County, which encourages consolidating lots in the foothills and utilizing a density bonus to preserve open space within the foothills. The city of Boise is directly to the south of the site, as shown at the Boise City Limits, is the properties that are highlighted in the yellow. So the city is directly to the south of the site with a couple of cluster subdivisions bordering the property to the south. To the northeast and west of the site is more rural in nature, with agriculture and rangelands along with rural residences. The neighboring residential cluster lots range in size from a half acre to two and a half acres. The proposed development is compatible with surrounding development in the area. These adjacent Boise City subdivisions are fairly new, as they were filed platted back in 2014, 2018, and 2020. The property is located within the wildland urban fire interface and hillside overlay districts. The development complies with wildland urban fire interface overlay district because a fire protection plan has been submitted for the development. This plan has been tailored to the subdivision. As condition, the property owners will be required to comply with the provisions within the plan. The development also complies with the hillside overlay district, as the applicant has submitted a hillside development application, which has been reviewed by the associate county engineer. Disturbed areas will be revegetated according to the slope stabilization and revegetation plan. Visual impacts have been minimized with the building pads for the home sites. Comments have been received from a neighboring property owner and a registered neighborhood group in the area. TLP LLC owns land directly to the west and north of the proposed subdivision, and they have provided the following concerns. They mentioned that the geotechnical field work for the property was completed in 2017, and the location of the test holes does not correlate with the locations of the building lots. They asked if any additional exploration occurred with regional faults in the area. They want further analysis to be done to determine the potential for seismically induced landslides. They have concerns about the wildfire safety plan regarding water supply and ignition-resistant construction. They are concerned that the five-acre lot sizes will block municipal sewer, viola water, and other utilities from going through the proposed subdivision into their property. They would prefer if the subdivision was served by viola water rather than individual wells. They want to see documentation that shows wellwaters available in quantities that will not affect adjacent property owners. They are concerned about the use of septic systems and the effect it would have on them being downhill. They are of the opinion that the fire department requirements necessitates a complete revision of the subdivision, and they question how the application will satisfy some of the fire department's requirements. They also wonder how recent legislation, from this year's Iowa Legislature on water rights, will affect the proposed subdivision, and they want to know the stats of the 53-acre open lot, and if it will be permanent open space, or if the acreage could be further developed in the future. Testimony was given at the Planning and Zoning Commission's public hearing to address the concerns raised by TLP LLC. However, they have stated in exhibit number 78 that they still have concerns following the testimony that was given at the Planning and Zoning Commission's hearing. They are concerned that the addition of 20 septic systems will affect groundwater quality, concerned that new groundwater wells may impact and draw down water levels of existing wells in the area. They want to know what the fire safety system will look like. Furthermore, they are concerned with the private roads being narrow, that will not allow for guests or family parking at any time. They are concerned that the applicant has done nothing to provide trail access easements or potential locations for future foothills-trail interconnectivity. They feel that adding to the trail system would be a great, good gesture to the community, and they are concerned that the secondary fire-road connection to Bogus Basin Road required by the fire department results in significant cuts and fills of the hillside. The Central Foothills Neighborhood Association stated that they oppose any further development in the Boise foothills, and they also expressed concerns regarding traffic impacts, wildfire risk, structural stability, and the protection of the valley's view shed. Staff finds that the concerns raised by TLP LLC and the Central Foothills Neighborhood Association can be addressed. As condition, the applicant and/or owner shall provide an update to the geotechnical report with results for test holes at the building envelope sites. The North Ada County Fire and Rescue District reviewed the wildfire safety plan for the subdivision and approved it with some requested edits. The subdivision has a 10-foot-wide public utilities and drainage easement coincident with the subdivision boundary and on the public road. Oops. The utilities easement could facilitate the extension of utilities to adjacent properties. Applications for new water rights may be approved only after it's determined that sufficient supply is available, and other prior water rights will not be injured. The Director of Iowa Department of Water Resources may require reporting water use by water users. The Central Street Health Department will need to approve other septic systems, and they will not approve of a septic system that doesn't meet their public health environmental regulations. The Ada County Highway District and their response stated that the development meets their level of service planning threshold. Bogus Basin Road is a two-lane minor arterial, and the acceptable level of service for a two-lane arterial is level of service E, which is 575 vehicle trips per hour. The current traffic count of Bogus Basin Road is 82 vehicle trips per hour, which is better than level of service E. Thus, the development will have minimal burden on the existing transportation system. A visual impact report has been submitted for the development, and based on the existing topography and landscape of the site, it has been determined that there are no existing views that are significantly impacted by the development. At the Planning and Zoning Commission's public hearing, a couple of people did testify in favor of the application. Those in favor of the project say that this project would provide much needed housing to Ada County. The Google Street View images shown on the screen shows what the property looks like from Bogus Basin Road. The Google Street View image at the lower right corner is looking north at the subject property, and this is Mr. Gibson's driveway down to his house. So that's kind of where his house and the driveway meet. And then the other Google Street View image is looking west towards homes west of the proposed subdivision. Several agencies and political subdivisions have provided comments on this application. As I mentioned before, this property is located within Boise's area of impact, and the city of Boise has expressed concerns regarding the proposed subdivision. They mentioned that the Boise City Council had voted to deny an annexation request on the property due to lack of adequate infrastructure, and that the design of the subdivision provided future connections for development and sensitive wolfy and hillside lands to the north and west. They believe that the property is best suited under Ada County's rural residential and rural preservation zoning designations, and should not be developed beyond these densities. The city is recommending for the county to deny the application- The city is recommending for the county to deny the application due to the following: Emergency Services. North Ada County Fire and Rescue District and the Ada County Sheriff will serve the development but are assisted by the city of Boise's emergency services. The increased population by the subdivision could strain their resources and level of service to their community. Resiliency Risk. They mentioned that development in fire-prone areas adds to fire fuel loads and complicates evacuation efforts. Transportation. They are of the opinion that development will worsen congestion. Septic Systems. They feel that the use of individual septic systems raises environmental and infrastructure concerns. Current and future land use. They believe that development of this intensity should be limited to density within cities where public infrastructure exists to accommodate this level of development. Wildlife Habitat. The site lies within a migration corridor for deer and elk impacting a finite natural resource. In conflicts with Boise's comprehensive plan, they feel that the proposed development conflicts with Boise's comprehensive plan. Staff finds that the concerns raised by the city of Boise can be addressed. This subdivision will result in a small increase in the population of the area as the development is only 21 buildable lots. The average household size for a single-family dwelling in and incorporate Ada County is approximately 2.9 people. Therefore, this development will have a population of approximately 61 people at buildout. 61 additional residents in the area should have a negligible impact on emergency services and should significantly strain Boise's emergency services. The subdivision is in the wildland urban fire interface and has a fire protection plan prepared by Jerry McAdams. The plan has been tailored to the subdivision, and there are provisions within the plan to reduce and minimize fire threats, and as condition, the provisions of the plan are required to be incorporated into the subdivision CCNRs. It should be noted that there are developments within the city of Boise that are also located in the wildland urban fire interface and share similar risk as the proposed subdivision. In addition, the North Ada County Fire and Rescue District opted to annex this property into its service area in 2024, demonstrating their ability to serve the development. Comments received from the fire district include conditions of approval to ensure the safety of future residents and those in the surrounding area. The Ada County Highway District in their response stated that this development meets their level of service planning threshold. Bogus Basin Road is a two-lane minor arterial and the allowed level of service is level of service E, which is 575 vehicle trips per hour. The current traffic count on Bogus Basin Road is 82, which is better than level of service E, thus this development will have minimal burden on the existing transportation system. The Central District Health Department will need to approve of the septic systems, and they will not approve of a septic system that does not meet their public health and environmental regulations. This development is of a very low density as the minimum lot sizes for the subdivision are five acres. Five acre lot sizes are lot sizes that you typically expect to find in a rural area and not necessarily within a city. This subdivision serves as a transition from the existing development in the city of Boise to the south, which consists of single-family homes and lots ranging from a half acre to two and a half acres to the more open rural lands north of the site. The Iowa Department of Fish and Game has stated that development has taken that this development has taken their recommendations and included them in the natural features analysis, which are being incorporated as conditions of approval for development such as requiring fencing to be wildlife-friendly. With the comprehensive plan, it is the county's interpretation of whether or not a development complies with the comprehensive plan and not the city. According to Brent Moore, senior community and regional planner, the proposed development is in compliance with the Boise comprehensive plan as adopted by Ada County. He also found that the proposal to locate buildable lots on the southern and eastern portions of the property in order to preserve 53 acres of ranchland on the northwest portion of the site is compatible with several goals of the Boise comprehensive plan as adopted by Ada County. The Central District Health Department stated that the land development application test holes and the Central District Health Department stated that a land development application, test holes, and a full engineering report is required. The Public Works Department responded that the Boise City sewer is not available to the public, to the property. The associate Ada County engineer provided the following key comments regarding the subdivision, hillside, and private road applications. The project is in a groundwater management area and is not in a critical groundwater area or nitrate priority area of groundwater or ground of groundwater concern or an area of drilling concern. The site is physically suitable for the design and signing of the proposed development. The disruption of existing native vegetation and wildlife habitat is minimized. The proposal sets forth sufficient and adequate mitigation for the identified visual impacts beyond the normally expected impact of hillside development. The applicant will need to submit a drainage application for roadside swales. The applicant is responsible for restoring all disturbed areas. A few items, the associate Ada County engineer did mention that some additional items need to be addressed by the geotech. These items include for lot one of block two, a slope drain needs to be installed to fix a deep-inversion cut. The geotech must explore the identified faults. The geotech must perform a numerical stability analysis. An every building pad needs geotech sign-off that is buildable and landslide potential has been mitigated. Staff finds that the application applies with Ada County, with the Boise comprehensive plan as adopted by Ada County and the Ada County code. The Planning and Zoning Commission at their public hearing also recommended approval of this application to the board, and I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions from the board to the staff? Go ahead.
If I heard right, you said the county engineer had some, are those, are those all in the conditions?
Yes.
Because I read some of them, I didn't know, they were, all of them that he addressed are in the conditions.
And Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Daley, that is correct.
Thanks. Okay, any other questions from the commission? All right, thank you. Thank you. All right, is the applicant here? Good evening.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Keith Clark. My address is 251 East Front Street in Boise, and I'm going to be presenting on behalf of Mr. Gibson. I'd like to, at the end, use a little time to let Mr. Gibson introduce himself to you as well as part of this application so you can kind of get a little bit of background here. So this is a very unique application and one I would say whose time has come. So if you go to the next slide, this is a picture of the property. You've probably driven by it dozens of times on your way up Bogus Basin, and you probably never even noticed that there's a house down there. That's because it sits below the main roadway. It's got a little dirt access that you would miss if you're not looking for it. Next one. And if you visit the site, what you'd find is a working ranch that's been there for decades. Mr. Gibson has about 400 head over there over the winter. Next slide. In fact, Mr. Gibson, sitting behind me, has not only worked the ranch for all those years, he was actually born on this property. So he's been there his entire life. He's been there long enough to watch the development come in all around him. He remembers when Highlands Hackberry was just another hill next door. He's been there long before there was a local land use planning act, there were zoning codes on this area or a wildland urban interface. He's also been there for the explosion of recreational trail use, and they say that no good deed goes unpunished, and this is one of those situations. Charlie was welcoming to the trails, he was welcoming to the mountain bikes, but now those trail users and all that encroachment of development is making ranching of this area impossible. So as you can imagine, this property that we're talking about today is base property for lease allotments throughout the foothills. And as time has gone by, now gates get pried open, the cows get out, and Charlie's had to pay thousands of dollars of penalties as a result of all of that. Even on the property himself, he and Heidi have had, just within the past few weeks, had to ask the sheriff to start patrolling because folks just stop and park on his driveway, start hiking around, and he needs to, needs them to get out of the way because he's got feed trucks coming down there and things that need to happen on the property. So it's, it's clear that the time to use this property as a working ranch has passed, and it needs to move to the next phase. Next slide. So development of the site shouldn't be a surprise to anyone. As Brent mentioned, it is buildable, quote, buildable on the Boise City Comprehensive Plan. There are no prominent ridge tops because it sits below the ridge. There are no views affected, and we did do the view analysis for the county to take a precat. Services are actually right there, and I'll tell you a little bit more about that here in just a second. There's actually a fire hydrant and a manhole at Bogus Basin Road, property's five minutes from downtown, and it also fits within the city's foothills ordinances. And something I'd ask or add to Brent's analysis, you saw the picture with the buildable drawing with the gray. Given that almost all of that property is below the 25% slope limit, if you apply the city's code and density bonus, you could actually do over 100 lots on that property. But unfortunately, it hasn't gone well with the city of Boise, and we've been at this for more years than I'd like to admit. We tried to get this done with the city, we made all sorts of concessions, and we fought hard, but we were denied. And it gets worse. The morning after our denial, I was called by someone from Boise City Parks and asked if now that the property had been denied, if Charlie would consider selling it to the city. Beyond that, we tried to muscle through, we worked our way through a number of different potential alternatives, nothing, nothing was successful. And then about a year ago, we asked North Ada County Fire to annex us. Boise City actually opposed Charlie being annexed into North Ada County Fire, despite the fact that North Ada County Fire goes all the way up Bogus Basin Road and is as well within their service area. So luckily, NACF saw no reason to treat Charlie differently than anyone else, and, and his property was annexed. So that is why we're here. That's why we're proposing to, to develop in the county is that we just have had no success in the city. So let's talk about the actual project. Next slide. We're proposing, as Brent mentioned, 21 five-acre minimum lots in an RUT zone with the remaining 53 acres staying in RP. So that 53 acres includes Charlie's existing home where he intends to stay, and if those plans were ever to change, keeping the property in the RP zone means that the county has full control over any such change. Projects been, we've been mindful to be, we've tried to be respectful of our neighbor to the west by clustering the development on the south and east sides. And as you saw in the staff report and as Brent went over in great detail, the subdivision, wildland urban interface, hillside, and private road standards have all been addressed. So we also have our engineer here, and he'd be happy to answer detailed questions, but I do want to go over a couple of specific issues. The next one. So first was fire. We do have a very detailed wildfire safety plan prepared by Jerry McAdams. As you know, he knows this stuff as well as anyone. We have requirements in that plan related to fire sprinkling, defensible space, what kind of materials are allowed. In addition, we worked with North Ada County Fire on what fire suppression would look like. They mandated a 22,500 gallon tank, which we have agreed to, and that's part of our requirements. Since the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, we continue to work with North Ada County Fire. We worked on additional access points, and another thing that North Ada County Fire asked for were so-called refuge areas. These are areas where you minimize the, the wild, excuse me, the vegetation and create additional areas of refuge and safety in the event that there is a fire situation. We've identified four such refuge areas with North Ada County Fire, and that is also part of our, of our commitment to them. And as a result of that, you have the updated letter from North Ada County Fire that's in your, in your file. Thanks. With regard to the open space and density bonuses, it's a little bit of a misnomer, but it does go to the question of consistency with the comprehensive plan. So as I mentioned, Charlie is going to stay on the property, on the, on the 50-plus acre lot with a hobby operation. That is that area in green that Brent showed you before. The 21 RUT lots all meet your dimensional standards, but that density bonus question, it goes back to what I mentioned before. Under Boise City Code, if you applied the density bonus, you could have more than 100 lots on the property if you did the actual formula. So of course, the county doesn't have a density bonus, but we have respected that in the way that we can by, again, clustering the lots and then using the RUT zoning, which is the zone that the county uses within the areas of city impact. Next one. With regard to geotechnical, Brent's covered this in, I think, adequate detail. It has been thoroughly reviewed. We did get an updated letter from Atlas confirming that they believe that the site is, can handle the type of development that's being proposed here. That is the appropriate level of inquiry for this stage of the process, but we are very well conditioned with regard to that, including a requirement of geotechnical sign-off on each building pad. Then next, with regard to water. I mentioned previously that city services are literally in the road next to the project. You know, our first option would be viola. And when we were in front of the city years ago, back when Suez was the operator, Suez was willing to serve. Viola has different requirements, and that includes they need additional pressure in that area with a new tank. We asked them to evaluate that, and they said, because we indicated that we'd be willing to work with them on it, they said the tank can't work on your property. It needs to be higher up at a higher elevation. So viola is not an option. So we then went to domestic wells, and Commissioner Daley, this has to do with the new Senate Bill 1083. We actually deferred our Planning and Zoning Commission meeting because we wanted to make sure that we understood what was going on with Senate Bill 1083. And as you all know, that traditionally with domestic wells, you can irrigate up to a half acre and do 13,000 gallons per day. Senate Bill 1083 changed that slightly in that in groundwater management areas, you can still use domestic wells for indoor use but not for outdoor use. And so what that means for this property is that the property, pretty much all along the Boise front, is in the Boise front low-temperature geothermal GWMA. That applies to wells that are deeper than 300 feet. So if we are required to do a well that's deeper than 300 feet, then Senate Bill 1083 would apply. So, next slide. We do not believe that our wells will be that deep based on the groundwater monitoring that we've done. So Commissioner Daley, you'll see in the packet, very detailed studies from HDR. Terry Scanlon took a look at all of this. He found no impacts on the aquifer, adequate recharge, no impacts on, on near my groundwater wells. But in order to be prepared for the possibility that Senate Bill 1083 might apply, we ran the analysis, we figured out that we could allocate the existing irrigation water right across these properties in the event that they need that irrigation water and then still retain enough for the, for the ranch lot below. And those detailed plans are in, in the record. So we got about four, four minutes left. I'm going to have Charlie come up, and then we will both be available for questions from there, if that's okay with you.
Sure, that's okay. Good evening, Charlie.
I'm Charlie Gibson. This is, I reside here at 5125 Bogus Basin Road. I was born there, as he said. I've ranch there all over the Boise front for years and years. I've had, I rented Hidden Springs, all of ranches, Dry Creek Ranch I rented, and I watched all them to be developed, and I figured I was next to the city of Boise, I'd probably get developed before they would, but it didn't happen. And so anyway, so I've been all over that country all my life, and like I said, I was born there. And anyway, I can remember back in, when I was five years old, my dad took me up Bogus Basin Road, and he went and seen, there wasn't a house in the Highlands, not one house in the Highlands, and it was all farmed by a guy that did it with horse and horses and mowing machines. And my dad took me across that flat there at Ranch Road, and I couldn't see over the alfalfa, he was taking me by the hand to over to see his friend over on the other side. And so I've seen all this development come, and I've never opposed it because I, people's got their property rights. And so anyway, but the time's come, I'm 74 years old, and, and I need to do something different. And I've seen everybody else do everything different, and so I plan on trying to stay there, do something, unless I buy another ranch somewhere, but I had all the state leases in the, up on the Boise front there, and it all went to the bikes. And the bikes don't like me. They don't like cows, and they don't like closed gates. And so I'm the last one left with cows up there on that Boise front. So anyway, it's a, it's a tough situation, so. But anyway, so, and then I, so I feed about 400 calves there, my calves in the winter there at the ranch, so I have to come up the road there with a truck every three days with a load of feed. So you can imagine what the bikers think of me with a semi truck, 60 foot, 75 foot long truck. truck going up through there. They don't, they don't like me. They give me this little finger sign all the time, coming around them in the smoke and put their nose up like that about the cattle in the truck. But anyway, so I need to do something else different there and so, and I'm not, not as tough as I used to be. So anyways, and my neighbor to the west is pretty tough on me. He's tried to buy my place many a time and, but never wants to come with any kind of money or anything else. Our development will only impact 750 foot of their whole, my whole west line against them. So anyway, and so, anyway, so that's basically where I'm at and I, we've tried with the city and, you know, just, I went through three different planners in the city from the planning and zoning, and they all say, yeah, let's go, we'll get it going, get it going, we get going. Cody Riddle and Hal, Hal, how was his name, Hal, Simmons, Hal Simmons, all of them said, come, let's go, let's get going. And then all of a sudden, we get right to that end and then we just get our heads cut clear off, you know? And then you talk to those guys and they don't want to talk to you anymore, you know? Something clicked somewhere. And so anyway, so I'm before you to ask your approval for this and help me out a little bit here on this deal. Otherwise, I'm just kind of, kind of a quarter there, I guess. And my whole south line is city. I mean, the streetlights shine in my bedroom, you know, from the city, streetlights. And so that's kind of where I'm at. So, so anyway, so I prove it. And do you have any questions?
Is there any questions further? Charlie?
Just, just a thank you for, one, taking care of the land in the first place.
Yeah.
So that it is available to do something with. But secondly is, it's interesting, your comments about the city of Boise, that we have places out by where I live where is like yours. There's plenty of services there, but they won't allow it to be developed.
It was, I guess, the biggest thing at the end of this deal was the fire department. North Ada County Fire Department will service people way up the road, but they didn't want to help me, you know what I mean? And if I was in Star or Eagle, I wouldn't have to have this, all I'm doing with the fire deal. You know, I wouldn't have to have fire plugs every 1,800 feet of the house and all that kind of stuff. I see those developments north Eagle don't do it. So there's a problem, there's a problem, a real problem there. And it all come out close. So, but anyway, that's basically where I'm at. So we'll just see what we can get done.
And one more. And thank you for answering my question about the water, the due diligence on the water question, because I think that's critically important for us to analyze when we're managing our land. Water is an essential component, part of it. So thank you for that.
There's water there. I had a new well put in the other day, drove a well in and we had water at 75 foot. So the good water, we went on down to get good water, but there's plenty of water there, you know, so.
All right, any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else here? I got nobody to sign up. Is there anyone else here? You wish to testify? Okay, give us your name and address. You've got three minutes. Thank you.
I'll go fast. Dave McKinnon, 10595 Halter Way, Ada County. Here representing TLP LLC tonight. We're the property owner immediately to the west and to the north of this site. And most importantly, we're on the downhill side of all of Charlie's Canyon, which gets to the biggest issues. First of all, I just want to applaud Charlie and his team. They've addressed a lot of the issues that we brought up. There was a lot of issues that Brent went through, geotechnical reports and dealing with the hillside and stability. They talked about limiting, you know, the irrigation there so they can limit the amount of water they're using. And they've made a lot of fire changes. The biggest one is they're adding a big 22,000 gallon tank, and that's one of the concerns we'll get to. Just start off, just break it down in three minutes. Water quality is the first biggest issue that we have. 21 new wells is 21 new wells. That's 21 more opportunities to cause contamination to the aquifer. It's also 21 wells that Senate Bill 1083 was trying to prevent. The reason why they're trying to prevent that is in the last 20 years, there's been around 25,000 new domestic wells. When the water's curtailed, they don't curtail domestic use. We have a water right down below the hill. We are continually farming. We do have 100 head of cattle as well. We need to have our water rights. We have priority dates for it, but even with priority dates, if the water goes down, we would be curtailed, they wouldn't be curtailed. 21 new lots, 13,000 gallons per day, that's an additional 10 acres of farmland that won't have groundwater for that. That's what they're able to pull out of the ground right now. So that's the reason why Senate Bill 1083 was there in the first place. So this goes against, it goes directly in the face of what 1083 was trying to prevent. Water quality, again, 21 new wells cause contamination. That also includes 20 new, 21 new individual septic systems. Granted, most septic systems are great, but just like a lot of things, you put it in and then people forget about them. Not everybody's well-educated with what to do with those septic systems after 10 to 30 years. The EPA says 20 to 30% in 20 to 30 years, they fail. So that's not exactly the most heartwarming thing for us to think about in the next 20 to 30 years, that four to seven of these septic systems will fail. We're the downhill user, plus there's all the water that's in that area that could be contaminated by those septic systems. So we're not exactly excited about that, to have that. And we just don't necessarily want to leave the sewer in the foothills. When this project came to the city of Boise, we didn't oppose it because it was going to have sewer that would take that out of the foothills and water would be there for fire suppression. Third item is fire. There's no parking on any of the roads within the subdivision. It takes one birthday party, one graduation party, one anniversary party. Where do people park in this? There's not going to be enough driveway space for it. They've made these private roads so narrow that they are required by the conditions of approval to have this signed for no parking. So it's kind of an interesting thing. I'm kind of interested in, Brent, can you put up the subdivision? Looks like there's been some changes since the PNC Commission. And we'll just go finally. There's a new holding tank. We don't know where it's going to be located, what it looks like. 22,000 gallon holding tank on Bogus Basin Road. It'd be nice to know what it looks like before you approve it. With that, I'd ask for your denial at this time. Ask if you have any questions for me?
Any questions? Have any questions? Go ahead.
So you're just, you're asking for the entire project to be denied?
I, at this point, I'd like to, I have a lot of questions. You know, the previous subdivision that we just talked about, they had to provide a well adequacy test. We've asked for that, they haven't provided that. Staff has said they don't need to provide that. It'd be nice to know that we have well adequacy, that it's not going to affect us. We've asked for that. So at this point, a table would be fine. There's just some questions that we have. We still don't know what the project looks like entirety. And it looks like there's been some major changes. Like they've added a portion of a road to connect two cul-de-sacs that weren't together, and they've also added a fire road up to Bogus Basin that wasn't in at the PNC Commission meeting. So I'm a little confused by how that happened if it wasn't brought up at the PNC Commission.
Could staff address any of those issues?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davidson, so this right here is basically the fire emergency access road. So throughout this process, the applicant's been working hard with the North Ada County Fire and Rescue District. And this is kind of a way to address the concerns for emergency access. So basically, if we go to like the, I'm trying to find the phasing plan real quick here. So basically, we have a phasing plan. So basically, the fire district said they're okay with Phase 1 without having that emergency access. Whatever they mentioned with Phase 2, they wanted an emergency access, you know, to connect to Bogus Basin Roads. If we go back to the, you know, to the Plumer Platte, the applicant then added this fire emergency secondary access so that if there was a fire emergency, we have a secondary access here. And initially, with the third phase of development, the fire district had initially wanted a connection through the turling property. And based on testimony that Mr. McKinnon had given at the PNC Commission, it sounded like that wasn't going to fly with the turlings. And so they, it looks like the applicant ended up proposing something different for the third phase for the fire access. And so this was approved by the fire district. And so now we have a kind of second emergency fire access. So we have it at the end of this cul-de-sac so that if there was an emergency, a fire emergency, we'd have access here to this, to this street here, and then we have another access, then they could go over here to this here. So that would be the fire emergency access for the third phase.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it's just brand new to me tonight. I understand it. It's just brand new. I hadn't seen it until we had the staff report tonight.
And your other issues specifically? What, you said you still have questions. What are some of the questions?
What and where is the 22,000 gallon tank going to be? I mean, that's a fairly big-sized tank. Just for an example, this is a 15,000 gallon tank sitting on the back of a flatbed. And they're talking about putting this someplace at the top of the hill by Bogus Basin because it's going to be a gravity-fed fire system. What's that going to look like? Is it going to be a round, you know, thing? How is it being maintained? Who's maintaining it? Is it the HOA? Just some stuff like that, that it's interesting. The fire plan that they originally came up with did not, their fire, the person who designed their fire plan initially did not provide any hydrants within the site and just said, well, go ahead with an internal sprinkler system on the living area, the homes. And it was North Ada County Fire and Rescue that came out and said, no, you need to have fire hydrants, just like it says in the WOOFI, the Wildland Urban Fire Interface requirement. You need to do that. And so we asked for that. They said, we're going to go ahead and put up a big, you know, tank at the top of the hill that'll provide gravity feed for that. Still don't know what that looks like or where it'll be located.
Is your concern the aesthetics of it potentially?
There is some potential aesthetics issue with it. Yeah, I just like to know. These are questions that we've asked and we just haven't had answers to. Do we know if there's water adequacy? You know, Charlie says, well, we hit it at 85 feet. It's great. That's great for one, but once you add 21, if you do even 1,000 gallons per day, which would be a bare minimum, that's 21,000 gallons per day just for the bare minimum. And we know that they can go up to 13,000 gallons per day, which all of a sudden, you're talking about, you know, several hundred thousand gallons per day out of the ground that could be taken out. And we just don't know if that's adequate without affecting us down below.
I guess I'd direct that to staff on the water issue, but what, what did you conclude as far as this, you know, potentially affecting water rights down the line there?
Sorry, Brent, that was directed to you. Conversations about water.
Sure. So, so Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davidson, so we had our associate county engineer kind reviewed that. And my, and the applicant actually did hire a kind of a water consultant to look at this as well. So, so basically, the, you know, the county engineer mentioned, let me find my notes here. It's not really, from what I, let me just find this really quick here. So basically, he had mentioned, the county, associate county engineer mentioned in his comments that the property is not, it's in a groundwater management area. And as Mr. Clark had said, it's more or less for a kind of low geothermal, you know, so it's not necessarily, you know, in a groundwater management area for, you know, kind of cold water, domestic water. And it's also not in a critical groundwater area or a groundwater area concerned or area of drilling concern. So in general, this Idaho Department of Water Resources hasn't really identified this as being an area where there's, you know, a high likelihood that there would be issues with, you know, if you drill a new well, that it would adversely impact other wells. You know, if the board, you know, was concerned, you know, there could be a condition of approval added to the development that we add a condition of approval that, you know, we could require a groundwater adequacy, you know, for each individual well in the subdivision, if that's a concern that the board had, that condition could be added to the proposed development. And the applicants may have some more information because I, you know, because I know he worked with, with HDR, and they may have some, a little bit more information that they could share in regards to what the HDR report found.
Okay, we'll direct future questions to the applicant. He have any questions to the test fire?
Is that?
That about covers it, yeah. We just, we have, we have questions and we just like them answered. And like I said, they've addressed a lot of the questions that came up. I mean, it really boils down to these, those three things that I brought up.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay, anyone else wish to testify on this, on this application? Okay, we'll give the applicant a few minutes to do a rebuttal if you'd like, and then maybe you could answer some of Commissioner Davidson's questions.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Heath Clark, 251 East Front Street in Boise. So one thing I just want to preface here is that there's a lot of history between the property owners that you've just heard from here tonight. Years and years ago, Charlie was ranching or was farming some of that property. He was told that he would no longer be able to farm some of that property if he wasn't, didn't give them a right of first refusal on this property. Refuse was kicked off. Before this application went in, there were offers made to me on this property. I responded that it was missing a zero. And so there's, I just want to give that context here.
Well, Mr. Chair, I don't know if we need the backstory. We just kind of want to stick to the facts.
Absolutely, absolutely. So with regard to the wells, so, you know, Senate Bill 1083, and we presented this all at the, at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. We, you know, illustrated the water use and the water plan. The, we have since, we have submitted to the record the conclusions of HDR. One of the quotes from the HDR report is, quote, "Given that pumping for irrigation purposes will occur under an existing water right with a 1912 priority date, it will not be a new stress on the aquifer, it will not injure existing water rights." You know, we believe of all of this has been asked and answered and that the experts have provided the response to all of that. With regard to septic, septic is appropriately conditioned. This is something that the county and Central District Health deals with on a day-to-day basis. We will follow all of the requirements of Central District Health, and that's the best that we can do. With regard to fire, there is not a subdivision requirement with regard to showing the location of the tank, but the tank will be up at Bogus Basin Road. It will be administered by and operated by our homeowners association. It will not be filled 22,500 gallons a day over and over and over again, as Mr. McKinnon suggested. It is a static system. It'll get filled once and then occasionally, through the course of maintenance, will get refilled as well. And that's also something that HDR looked at. We have, in addition to the irrigation right, we also have a grazing, a stock water right that could also be allocated to that. So we're very comfortable that we have the water to be able to pressurize that, that, the fire suppression. And I think that was it, but Commissioner Davidson, if there was other things that you think I've missed, I'm happy to try and answer those.
I guess, did you have a spot picked out for the, for the water tank?
We know the elevation, it needs to be up pretty close to Bogus Basin Road because it needs to be high enough to pressurize the system. We don't have a specific location identified right now, but it'll be up near Bogus Basin Road.
I mean, I'm assuming it's going to be designed in some way to be aesthetically pleasing because the residents there will have to look at it.
We're going to be selling lots, right? So we're not going to put an ugly piece of junk out there. It's going to need to be something that allows the project to continue to be marketable.
Okay, any other questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead.
Just to reiterate again, who were the technical reviewers of water?
HDR was the entity and Terry Scanlon was the principal that oversaw all of that.
And that, that information was also reviewed by our county people, correct?
That's my understanding, Commissioner Daly, yes.
That's correct?
Yes, our county, associate county engineer would have reviewed that, Mr. Commissioner Daly.
And, go ahead. So, and there are water rights now on the property, correct?
Correct, Commissioner Daly.
For pumping groundwater?
For irrigation, yes, yeah. And when I spoke to you during my initial presentation about that allocation so that we're prepared for the implications of the change in Idaho law on domestic water rights, that allocation was based on that existing irrigation water right going about half-ish to the ranch lot and about half-ish to the, to the other lots.
You anticipated, that was my next question, is the water right that's there is adequate to, based on even the new law, to meet the needs of the development as it's been proposed?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Daly, that's correct. And we did ask HDR to look at that specific question, and there's a separate report in your, in the record analyzing all of that.
And then?
Go ahead.
The the quality question as well, because some of this is is in a potential hot water area as well as just regular groundwater. So the water quality question was addressed in the review as well, correct?
I would have to look at that, Commissioner Daly. We were primarily focused on adequacy, and these wells are anticipated to be shallower, so they wouldn't be anywhere near any of that. Let me ask the engineer here though and see if he has any more background on that. So just one second.
Kent Adamson with River Ridge Engineering, 2447 South Vista Avenue. As far as I'm, I've know of the report, there's limited information about the quality in that report. However, Charlie has, you know, lived on that property for, you know, since the beginning of time here and has had several wells on that property and used it for both his cattle and himself. And he's 70 years old, so. The other thing is, is that this water quality area is geothermal. It's not nitrates or otherwise. So I think there's limited, you know, as the county has said, possibility for there to be contaminants and stuff like that in there.
Right. I I just wanted to know if you had studied it because that is one of the areas of the county that has the highest water quality, actually. So I didn't know if you had verified that. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other questions for the rebut, from the rebuttal from the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Thank you. All right, Brent, do you need to add any documents to the record?
Mr. Chairman, I do. Exhibit number 81 will be my presentation, and exhibit number 82 will be Mr. Clark's presentation.
Okay. All right. Well, with that, I will close the public hearing on application 2024-02657-ZCDA-S-HDPR, River Ridge Engineering. Okay. The public hearing being closed, it's now for the board to make a decision. Anyone want to kick it off or anyone want to make a motion?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I guess I'll reiterate what I said before. It's interesting that the City of Boise's objection is to, due to lack of adequate infrastructure, when we're experiencing other parts of the county where there is infrastructure and they refuse to let it be used. And here, a similar kind of thing in terms of the City of Boise. I I think the issues have been addressed by the, in the proposal, even in that regard. They've gone to the water quality question, the water quantity question. There are always questions of how it's going to actually work, whether it's a septic tank or a or a well. Because we don't know as much as as we need to know, and that's what we're trying to find out about all of those things and how they're functioning. But I think, I think they've, they've done their due diligence and I would, I would sort of support the application, but.
Okay, well, I read the conditions of approval and they're pretty voluminous.
Yes, that's, that's another point. This is extra vol, extra volume in terms of.
That's why I said voluminous.
Okay, is there?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll, I'll concur. I see a a large amount of due diligence has been done on this and and a lot of the the questions have been answered. That may have been the longest staff report I've ever heard in the beginning. I mean, there's, there's a lot of effort to being put into this. And so appreciate the the testimony from the neighbor. You know, it sounds like, based on what he said during this entire process between P and Z and us and before, some of his issues are, have been addressed. There's always going to be additional concerns, which he he brought tonight. However, I think the the concerns I heard tonight were largely speculative, you know, think what if things went wrong? But I think you have a higher bar. If you want to just outright stop a project, you probably should have some kind of, you know, fairly substantial evidence to show that there would be harm to a neighboring property. And we did discuss each each one of the concerns that the neighbor had, and I, you know, heard pretty good testimony from staff and and the applicant that they're, they're being addressed, they're being considered. You know, the neighboring properties, they don't necessarily have the right to see every aesthetic detail or design choice that goes into another project. You don't necessarily get veto power just based on not being able to to know every single detail. Obviously, you know, the the landlord wants to sell these lots for as much of a profit as he can get. And so it's going to have to be designed in a way to attract that kind of investor who wants to buy these homes. And so I think, you know, that in itself is going to, you know, address a lot of the aesthetic concerns that 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 the neighbor may have. So I see no reason to to deny this. Again, hopefully the neighbors can work together to address any other outstanding issues, but I'm I'm satisfied. The vast majority of them have been addressed.
All right, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the application 2024-02657-ZCDA-S-HDPR, River Ridge Engineering, application based on findings of fact and conclusions of law and the testimony that we've heard here and considered, that it be approved and the staff reporting as well tonight.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there further discussion? I do think this is one of the most voluminous reports I've seen come from our staff. Clearly working on it a long time, and there seemed to be a lot of work gone into it. And I think there's a, there's a lot of, you got a lot of work to do. Okay, hearing that, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Been a long fight.
Good luck.
Okay, appreciate it.
Okay. I will now open the public hearing on application 2024-27-02737-SPR, Sophie Wassim. We have Leon back in the, in the box. Go ahead, Leon.
Yes, Sheriff Commissioners, there's no variance for this one. I hope you're not disappointed. Before you is a two lot subdivision, which also includes a private road lot. The applicant is Wassim Sofi, and the subdivision name is Sofi Star Subdivision. Pictured here is a vicinity map for the project. It's in the southwest Boise Ada County area. Boise city limits are about 150 feet to the east, highlighted there in yellow. As you can see, there's a mixed development around the site, some smaller lots to the north and east and southwest, and then some larger rural residences to the west and south. It is a 1.91 acre site and it's zoned R8. It is currently connected to City of Boise Sewer, as a lot of the homes in the area are. And they actually have approval to connect the new home to sewer as well. This is one of those unique situations.
Yes, how did that, how did that happen?
I know. It's that tricky sewer policy extension document, but this actually predates the sewer policy. And so they've, and Mr. Sofi might be able to explain better, but they've honored the ability to continue extending sewer for some of these older lots like this. So pictured here is the development itself. There's an existing single family home on site that will be Lot 1. And then there will be a new Lot 2 to the west that will have a new single family home. In the picture here, you can see that the property does have some frontage on South Zeus Way, which is a public roadway. But Tarp Lane, a private road, is actually going to serve the development for access purposes. And so Mr. Sofi can speak to that a little bit more, but Zeus Way is not intended to be a primary access for the, for the lots in the development. Let's see. So one acre will be point, or one lot will be 0.7 acres in size. The other will be about 0.8. And the private road lot is 25 feet wide. So for our private road standards, we did grant an alternative there. Tarp Lane is a historic private road. It's already built. It's already approved. They are going to just extend the private road into the site to allow both lots to make use of it. So we allowed them a reduced easement width for that. But the width of the graveling or paving, I believe it's just going to be gravel at this point, will meet the standards for Ada County code. Terms of comments from agencies, the county building official had no objection to the project. Our community and regional planning team found it to be in compliance with Boise's Conference of Plan. Health district had no issues because there's no septic and it's connecting to Boise City Sewer. County engineer provided comments regarding the private road grading and drainage permits. Whitney Fire District provided some comments concerning fire turnarounds, access to the site, fire hydrants and addressing. In the packet, if you read through all of that, you will see two letters from Whitney Fire, one with some initial requirements. And then as Mr. Sofi worked through those requirements with Whitney Fire, they found some solutions in the form of an access easement for a neighbor for emergency use, and that has resolved some of their, Whitney's initial concerns with the project. So they're in a good place with that. And that would all be reflected in the final plan for the project. As I mentioned before, City of Boise Public Works noted that sewer is available to the development, and Vila also noted that they can serve the the project as well. In terms of public comments, there was one, and not so much in opposition to the project, they actually did state some support. But they have some design concerns and and other concerns that they've raised that I'll try to walk you through. So first, given the unique layout of the property, there's fencing along Zeus Way that's been started but not finished. It currently is about six feet in height. And I've got some photos here that I'll illustrate this with shortly. For the neighbor concerned, they are, they would like to see a different treatment for that fence along the Zeus Way frontage, either pulled back in terms of still being six feet in height, but pulled back from the edge of the sidewalk, or reduced in height at the edge of the sidewalk. Per our code and the orientation of the home on that Lot 1, that is technically the front yard. We could technically ask that to be a three foot fence. But when you look at the property, it gets kind of complicated because now we've got the neighbor's side yard being this person's front yard, and they have a six foot fence there. So it gets complicated as to how the fence design actually works here, given one lot's oriented a certain way and one lot's oriented another way. So at the end of this, I'm going to ask you to consider fence design. I think, per our code, you have discretion with an approved use to grant an alternative fence design. You could grant a six foot tall fence right at the edge of the sidewalk for Mr. Sofi. You could ask him to move that back. You could ask him to lower it. Those could all be conditions of approval to the project. So just keep that in mind as you hear testimony here tonight. There were also some concerns about some trash and recycling cans visible from Zeus Way. They would prefer some screening. I think when the fence is ultimately installed, that would provide the screening that the neighbors requested, but the applicant can address that in their presentation as well. And then there was a large trailer on the property that is located on Mr. Sofi's property that's parked pretty close to the neighbor's fence, and they were just hoping that that could be relocated somewhere else on the property or taken off the property. Again, Mr. Sofi can address that. So here are some of the pictures illustrating the concerns of the neighbor. So you'll see here, this is Ms. Prince's property, and this is her front yard. So now there's a six foot fence that wraps around these utility boxes, and then we have the six foot fence along Zeus Way here. So Ms. Prince's request would be that, you know, per our code, we could ask this to be moved 20 feet back into the site to be outside of that front setback, front yard area, and they could, you know, a six foot fence would be appropriate there. Again, Mr. Sofi would lose 20 feet of his property in terms of its use, and so that's something he's going to want to talk to you about. Let's see, the next one, these are the garbage cans that were of concern. And regarding the fence, you can see that Mr. Sofi has already put some posts in. Looks like he's going to continue trying to construct the fence here. So again, giving him some heads up as to where that fence needs to be located, if it's anywhere other than this, would certainly be welcome at this hearing tonight. And this is the trailer that was mentioned by the neighbor in terms of being parked close to their fence line, and again, their desire to have that relocated somewhere else. In terms of findings for the project, staff does find that it is in compliance with the Conference of Plan. It's also in compliance with the sections of code as it relates to subdivisions and private roads. I mentioned the alternative design for that private road earlier, based on the historic Tarp Lane and how it was built. Staff is recommending approval of this project. Our P and Z recommended approval of the project as well. Currently, there are no conditions associated with fencing in in my proposed conditions of approval. So I'm asking you to consider if you want to add some conditions to that effect based on the testimony that you hear tonight. And that concludes my presentation. I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, any questions?
Mr. Chairman? Go back to the the aerial of the lot. So where, where's the current, the current house, I think I can see, but where's the, where's the new house going to be?
Yeah, the new house will be located on this portion of the property, so it'll be west of the new home. So this fence that is in question is for really the existing home on site and the lot that would be created for that.
So that, so, and and the address of the new home is going to be Zeus Way?
It's off of Tarp Lane, actually.
That's the address?
Yeah, yeah. Both lots will be addressed off of Tarp Lane.
The post office address, okay.
Yeah.
So, because you indicated that 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 fence was the front yard.
Yeah, so we, Ada County Code has an interesting part of its code regarding front yard and how it's defined. So the home is actually oriented, it's tucked back into this corner, but it's oriented to the south. And so we take the front of the home and the property line that is essentially in front of the home is considered the front. So that makes this all a front yard area. It makes this kind of a unique street side setback. This new lot line in here, this will be the side, and then this will be the rear, and this will be another side. So again, we're running into an interesting situation where this is actually a platted lot. It was part of the Moonridge subdivision. But the way they built the home on site and where they take their access from is unlike the other homes in the development. So now we've got side yard, side property lines meeting front property lines and so forth. And so how you design a fence around that gets a little complicated sometimes, so.
I guess this might be for them as well, but staff, so that, is that south?
Yes. Yeah, this is oriented, so up is north, down is south.
Okay. Just want to make sure. That that's normal on a, on a map, but I didn't know that. So that property, all that property to the south then is, there's two houses. There's the the house that's immediate right there that has the fence right next to it, and then that other house?
Right, yeah. This is Ms. Prince's property here that I mentioned earlier. She's, who provided comments. And then this is another property owner who's actually granting an access easement to Mr. Sofi for that emergency access.
Okay.
His front, I think he's technically, well, he might be able to speak tonight. I'm not, I think he takes access off of Tarp Lane versus Zeus Way? Yeah. So again, we have this interesting little enclave back here off of the Tarp Lane access.
So that house, that's where she's going to ask as well, the access of those two houses, one is from Zeus Lane and the other one is from?
From Tarp Lane and Zeus Way.
Those two houses have different access points?
Well, this one here, the large one that you're talking about, it is also accessed off of Tarp Lane. So they come down this long driveway to access their property back here as well. But they have Zeus Way, you know, dead ending at their property.
Available but not used.
Right.
But so the only, the only house in that area then is the, what'd you say her name was?
Ms. Prince.
Ms. Prince. She's on Zeus Lane?
Yes, yeah. She's, I mean, she's all, she's a part of this entire subdivision, but the way this lot was created, they platted this large lot here and then her home directly south of it. So a bit cut off from the other lots in the subdivision that look more like her lot, so.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions of our staff? Okay, thank you. Is the applicant here wish to testify?
And I do have some pictures from Mr. Sofi.
My name is Wassim Sofi, and I'm resident of 7910 West Tarp Lane, Boise, Idaho, Ada County. And regarding the, one second, so sorry. Regarding the road, I think I read Ms. Prince's comment about the road and then the driveway. She, I think she is mistaken that I'm going to just have access from the Zeus Way. That was originally the plan because I did not own the Tarp Road, and I had to go and purchase as, because the current owner at the time did not give me easement, so I had to go purchase it. So I changed the plan and then went from Tarp Lane. So the Zeus access will not be there. there. And regarding the fence, the fence has been there like more than three years. I have not constructed it fully and completed because I thought I will just complete it when the house is building. It'll look same as the rest of the fence, uniform. Otherwise, I don't think Ms. Lisa would have any stipulation right now if I was not splitting it. There would have been fence. Right now, currently, there is a fence, and it's not only my fence that is like that. There are many properties I have, provide pictures to Leon. Oh, sorry. There are more than three properties that have fence like that, and I'm not the only one who has a fence like that. And I did, when I constructed the fence, I did keep Ms. Leslie's property in mind, so when she's coming out of the, her driveway, her vision is not blocked, and it won't cause any accident or anything. Could you click on that, that picture, the third up, the, the next one? Yes.
These are a little small.
As you can see, on the south side, I have stopped like at least 10 foot back, and then I just went sideways and started constructing back towards. So Ms. Lisa, Ms. Lisa does not have any blockage from the fence, or it doesn't block any light or anything. If anything blocks, that is the tree in this case. And as far as goes the trailer, it's on my property in the back of it, and I'm not the only one who has a trailer in the back of the property. There are several in the Moonridge subdivision. I'm not part of the Moonridge subdivision, but in the Moonridge subdivision, there are people who have back, trailer in their back of the property. So I don't know how I'm the only one who has to move the trailer from that side, and that's the only place I have, I had, that's the only place that pathway where I can put the trailer, otherwise it will be in the dirt that will sink, and it's not even my trailer, it's temporary there because it belongs to a veteran, and I'm helping him while he's constructing his home. And, but going back to the fence, the fence is, it's not, oh, sorry. It's not a, it's a unique property, because if I just like a, don't build, construct a fence there, it'll look really odd to the property. And plus, I have a livestock that has been attacked by dogs from Moonridge subdivision, from subdivision, and I have gone court a few times for that. So if I went lower at the fence, three foot, they will, dogs will still come. And the, if I go to six foot, it will prevent the dogs, and it will also address the Ms. Lisa's issue that she see, she said she sees the garbage cans. Oh, I can see this. She said that the garbage cans are in a open eye, but it will also hide those two with the six-foot fence. But three-foot fence will just, it will not like resolve anything. It will only just put a barricade there. And, but since I have livestock, please keep that in mind. And plus, Ms. Lisa said to just hide the garbage cans, and three-foot fences, garbage cans are almost five foot tall, and that will not address that issue. So if I just set back a little bit more, then I will lose the property that I need because I have a long trailer. I'm hoping that I will just park that there. And I'll, initially, I thought I would just split that part and then sell it and pay off my house. That was, but as you guys know, there's a motorium on the sewer lines, and it took me three years to get a sewer line from city. And so in future, if there is a possibility, I'll get, most likely, I will just split that lot and then we'll put it with the Moonridge subdivision, and it will look uniform, everything. But currently, I'm asking for the approval without any condition, because if I just put a lower the fence, it will just cause a problem with my livestock. I had to just remove the livestock from my own property, just because of dogs were coming and then attacking them all the time, and I had to go court many times, several times. And court is the one who just asked me to put the fence. And so they said, just put whatever you can, prove that you did it, you do diligence, and we'll just dismiss the case. And so they did it, unfortunately for that, but I'm just planning to bring my livestock back eventually. It's like pygmy goats, it's not like cows or anything, but I just need the six-foot fence for that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
So the, since your access is the other street, the garbage cans, the garbage is picked up on Zeus, not on?
Yes, because that is over 1,000-foot-long stretch, Tarp Lane, and it will take a long, especially in the winter. It is a, and then I have talked to the Ada County Trash, they said they won't just make an exception, go all the way inside the property and pick up. So I have to go through the record until we come with an agreement with the Ada County Trash.
And follow another question. So, and you indicated that the trailer was basically there temporarily because somebody else is going to be?
Yeah, it's not my trailer. It belongs to a veteran, and then he's constructing his home, he can put there, so I asked him to put it. He has moved several times and brought it back whenever he needs, but it's not my trailer. I don't own a trailer currently.
So, so it will be moved? I mean, it's not?
Yeah, eventually it will be moved.
It's not envisioned to be there permanently, correct?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this application? Okay, go ahead. Just give your name and your address.
My name is Lisa Prince, and I live adjacent to Mr.'s.
Can you say that again?
I'm sorry. My name is Lisa Prince. I live in 6831 South Zeus Way, adjacent to Mr. SoFi's property. I presented the letter and appreciate the opportunity to provide comments prior to the hearing this evening because I was hesitant to speak, but I also appreciate the opportunity and am willing to answer questions. I do have concerns. In review, as we've spoken tonight, my property is frontal, as well as the neighbor on the adjacent other south side, north, I apologize, who is a renter. We both have frontal property, and I've spoken with the subdivision that we are in, as well as Ada County. The subdivision feels that I will be out of compliance if we grant Mr. SoFi his wishes. So I do appreciate your consideration this evening. Something else that I've learned through this process is about the clear vision triangle, and that may need to be addressed as his drive will be from his access lot directly to Zeus Way. And it's my understanding that the clear vision triangle was created for safety, so that there would be, if I'm correct, 20 foot along the roadway with a 10-foot inset for vision. So in consideration of what that fence would be, I would like to have that addressed. As you can see from the fencing, it does box my property in, which isn't consistent with the subdivision. I did ask about the fencing that Mr. SoFi provided, which is down the street, which is next to the sidewalk, and the Moonridge representative said to me that just because that fence is there does not mean it's in compliance. So we can't base going forward on something that hasn't been reviewed. So that would just be a consideration, but if you have questions, I would be happy to answer them.
How would you be out of compliance for something your neighbor's done?
Because I have frontal property in Ada County, I need to abide by Ada County ordinances and my subdivision's ordinances. And I'm not, I've been told by my subdivision that I'm unable to do that if we comply with Mr. SoFi's request. So it's a learning experience for me. I support Mr. SoFi and his new endeavor, but I have lived in my home for nine years, volunteered prior to Mr. SoFi to help keep the lot representative of our subdivision, and would just like to see it going forward as something that fits within the neighborhood, fits within the standard of the subdivision, adjacent to Mr. SoFi. So I appreciate your consideration. I thank Mr. Letson, and I thank the commissioners for just considering my concerns.
Okay, any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I guess, so I'm, you said the visual, the visual, the 20% visual. What, what, explain that to me in terms of the fence?
So I, I have the code, I have code section 49221, which I don't know if that's current, but that's what I found from the Ada Vision, Clear Vision, Ada County Clear Vision Triangle, and it just addresses where the roadway accesses the main, where the driveway accesses the main roadway, that for safety, there's a clear vision triangle. And so to put up a full six-foot fence without regard to that clear vision triangle might not be possible. I would like to ask that the property is addressed as frontage as all the other houses on that street are. With the three-foot fence, if it's solid, the four-foot, if it's vis, if you can see through it, with the 20-foot setback at that height, not from the sidewalk, but on the sides, back into the property. The garbage cans often stayed on the street. They were a concern to me. I see other garbage cans that are set back next to a home that I have no concern about. They're, it's, they're property, they're taking care of them. These just felt like they were, within the subdivision, were unable to leave, and I wouldn't want to leave, the garbage cans on the street. So I just felt like it was out of the norm for the local neighborhood, and since we were addressing the concerns, that was a concern. But I believe that if they are just set back within the property with a fence that was in compliance with the county, they wouldn't, I mean, even if they were seen because it was a lower fence, that it, it wouldn't be out of the norm, it wouldn't be unacceptable. It's, I honestly have good intentions, and when I see other garbage cans in the neighborhood, I'm not upset or troubled whatsoever. This was just, they were just treated out of the norm for the neighborhood, the area. And I did provide the pictures for you so that you could see that the fence that was created with the setback that Mr. SoFi referred to actually excluded his utilities, so that if, if I understood him correctly, he was able to have access to those who needed to read the meters or whatever was needed outside of his fence line. So that was my understanding of why it was constructed the way it was.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Go ahead.
Question. I guess clarification as far as that visual, my interpretation of the reason for that is so that, for traffic safety, as you said.
That was my understanding.
But if you look, if you look at, you're the only, there's, that's, that's the end of the road, street, you're the only one accessing it, so in terms of the, the need for that there, it's not the same as if that street were a busy street going by and, and the visual, your visual, you, you, when you back out of your driveway onto that road, it's basically a cul-de-sac.
There's, there's the sidewalk. It, his road is at a distance from my north property line. So it wouldn't, the fence wouldn't actually, it would be more north than my drive, as you're saying, but the sidewalk, it's my understanding that the clear vision triangle is also for the safety of a sidewalk. Also, in speaking with Moonridge subdivision, the fence that is at the end of that road is possibly temporary, is what, whether that's correct or not, that's what they have told me. So I don't know if in the future, there might be more traffic. There is a new subdivision, which is east of the property, that's close to his roadway, but across the street.
That, that, that is in, that is in the City of Boise, correct?
Chairman Commissioner, the yellow is in the City of Boise. So there might, I think there is, in this area, there are some new subdivisions coming online. Yeah, I can't remember, this has a, I used to know the name of the subdivision, I worked on it back in the day, but yeah, this area is continuing to be platted, and so there are new subdivisions coming south of here.
And the access could possibly be off Zeus.
It, it.
I mean, I think there's an intention that someday, if this property owner wants to redevelop, that the road would be continued through. That's how they've set up Zeus Way, but I haven't, I don't, there's no pending subdivision in our jurisdiction or, to my knowledge, but again, the property owner could address that.
Okay.
There is a subdivision.
In this area, south of this area, is that what you're referring to? South of the yellow?
No, just directly Mr. SoFi's entrance, right? And if you go east, that's all subdivision.
Oh, but not a new one? I thought you said there was a new subdivision.
Oh, it's like four, five years?
Oh, yeah. So this is, yeah, this is an existing subdivision, but I don't know of any, I think there are new subdivisions coming online south of here, but that's all in the City of Boise. But this is an existing subdivision to the east, yeah.
And that road, that road there connects that City of Boise subdivision onto Zeus?
Yeah, there's a small roadway here that, whoops, yeah, Snowberry Street connects Zeus Way to Silver Spur Way.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Okay, okay, thank you.
Commissioners, thank you, Mr. Letson.
Okay, is there anyone else wishing to speak on this? Well, you can, well, you can do a rebuttal if there's nobody else to speak, and I guess there's no one else wishing to speak, so go ahead. You can, you can take a few minutes for a rebuttal if you'd like.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. I heard Ms. Lisa's concern about it. She had a valid concern if there was a reason for what she's saying. Can I present these, Mr. Leon has these pictures, but I think they are not rejected properly. Can I present these to you guys?
Sure.
Yeah, sure.
I can zoom in on them.
Then he can, he can show you on the picture, and then you can see it too. Okay.
I can zoom in on these if that's, for everybody.
Yes. Well, you have, you'll have to have one for the staff to give one to Leon.
Chairman, I think I have one right now.
You already have.
On the project.
We'll have it in the record.
So could you go to the, what Ms. Lisa says, Zeus meets the Basari?
Uh, yes, the area.
It is just, oh, at the picture, the picture, the one I presented you, this one earlier.
Sorry about that, okay. Let me know when we're there, I'm not sure.
Okay, one minute, just could you go one down?
One more down?
No, no, up, up, so sorry.
What, right here?
I'm apple guy, opposite. This is Ms. Lisa's property, yeah, and that's my fence. She does not have a She does not have a close vision in any way, what the triangle she's talking about. And could you go down a little bit further? A little more, a little bit more, please. A little bit more.
Don't worry, sorry.
It will have a grass on it. Oh.
Maybe go back.
Maybe I didn't send you one.
Oh, if you send me another one, I don't have that. I can't, I'm not able to just upload images quickly, so.
So from that Zeus to Basari, what Ms. Lisa was saying, there is a more than forty feet distance to my property and then the road. So it does not block any way. And then, as I said in the, initially, I am not intending to use that driveway. That driveway was only made, built because I did not own the road and then the guy never had given me easement at a time, the Tarp Road. And I had to buy in this process, during this process, I had to purchase that road. And Mr. Leon is well aware of that. And he had asked me either get an easement or you had to use Zeus. So I do not intend to use that road at all, the Zeus Way. That's why I'm building a fence, so others will not go through either. And plus, I have a livestock, as I mentioned before. And I'm trying to just protect my livestock and they have been attacked several times. And I had to go, it's not cheap. Every time animal control picks my livestock, it's a six hundred dollar ticket. Each time I had to pay, it's a lot of, and my livestock is worth only two hundred dollars. I have purchased those pygmy goats, two hundred dollars. And each time I pay six hundred dollars. And therefore, it does not affect what Ms. Lisa said, triangle. There is no concern of a triangle thing. I understand she got it from the court, but it does not affect on any visual or it does not impair any, uh, uh, sorry, I apologize. It, it won't just block anything for anyone. And there's a dead end after the lease, Ms. Lisa's, there's a dead end. And there is no subdivision getting built. And I talked to property owner, he's currently here too. And he does not have a plan for probably next twenty, thirty years to build anything there. And by the time, I might have a house on that lot, so there won't be any issue.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant? Any questions?
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, you've got all those pictures, don't you?
You, you have all these pictures? Um, you know, I'll confirm real quick. I believe I was emailed all those by Mr. Sofi.
If you could bring up one more picture, I'd like to see, uh, the lady's front yard.
Yes, let's see, is that, is this a good one?
No, that's not the one.
Straight on.
Straight on the house.
Okay, um, I think. I think there's a picture in. Yeah. His pictures.
No, you, you brought it up with, which was.
I think it's in these pictures here, so let me. No, I'm getting, trying to get to your, this is yours, is that correct?
Yeah, there you go. Could you expand that a little bit? There you go. So that's the front yard right there. And that's the garage, that's your garage. And this street right here is Zeus.
The street in front, right? Yes, that is Zeus Way.
Right, okay. So I, I, okay, that's enough, that's enough. So you've got everything you need to add.
Chairman Commissioner, I do have all these pictures. They'll be entered as exhibits to the record as well as my presentation, as I mentioned earlier.
Okay, so you don't need to add anything else to the record?
Nothing else.
Okay, well, with that being the case, I will close the public hearing on application twenty-two-four-zero-two-seven-three-seven SPR. Okay, it's, uh, the application is before us. Is there any questions or issues or any discussion?
So just, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Just as a clarification, the request is, outline the request again.
Yeah, Chairman Commissioners, so staff is recommending approval of the project. Uh, and so as P and Z, there were no conditions added about fencing as a part of our approval. So if you wanted to add any of those, we would want to make sure to capture that in your motion.
But the approval is to do what?
A two lot subdivision served by a private road lot known as Tarp Lane.
That, that is the request?
That is the request, yeah.
Yeah, any questions? Okay, and the two lot subdivision, bring that picture up again so we can see that. And you had a picture, I guess the easement he got coming down here, was that his? Granted himself an easement or what?
Chairman Commissioners, the easement's from the neighbor to the south to allow for emergency access into the site. Um, and that was a fire, Whitney fire requirement. They don't want to make use of Tarp Lane. Zeus Way, as Mr. Sofi mentioned, is not going to be in access. So there is a access created, I believe, in this area over here to allow for emergency access into Mr. Sofi's property. And that will be recorded on the final plat.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead.
And that is also providing access to the property on the south, correct?
Chairman Commissioners, Tarp Lane is a very old road. I believe this gentleman already has access to that.
Right.
And so there's nothing that he has participated in for this project because he's already making use of Tarp Lane, so.
That's already an easement that he's using?
Yes.
It just would, in essence, the Whitney fire, it would actually help him as well then?
Yeah, it's just a formalized, very specific easement regarding emergency access, not just a general access easement. And they, they requested that as a solution to the fire hydrant issue that they, they had, so.
Okay, well, I think that makes it clear. Is there any, any for, any more discussion or questions? Okay, well, then I will accept the motion.
Well, I'm going to approve to approve application number two-zero-two-four-zero-two-seven-three-seven dash S dash PR based on the findings, fact and conclusions law contained in the staff report and the testimony heard this evening.
I second the motion.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, I hear no further discussion, I'll call for the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. I don't believe we have anything else on the agenda.
That's all we have, Chairman Commissioners.
Okay, with that, we are adjourned.